Our first item of business is the calendar, which keeps filling up. Anybody want to note anything in particular? I guess there are a couple of new items. The April 28th Allen November presentation on education technology, which is sponsored by the Brookline Education Foundation, is terrific. Unfortunately, we won't be able to be there because there's a conflict. That's the night that the superintendent is going to the advisory committee, which is very unfortunate. So, some people will have to report back on how outstanding that event is. Is BATV gonna, or whatever it's called, BIG, going to?
I don't know that yet.
Anyway, if BIG is there, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we can arrange that.
The Steps to Success fundraising event is terrific, and we all have Step Up for Our Stars. We have it here. People should know that that's at the same time as the League of Women Voters Candidates Night. So, if people can use their Hermione Granger time turner, they might be able to be in both places at once. Otherwise-
The league starts at seven, and it starts at six.
That's right. The league starts at seven, and so we hope everybody goes to the Steps to Success fundraiser first before going to the league. And I think they're going to move the school committee presentations to the end-
Eight thirty.
To eight thirty.
I got a note today.
Good, because I think it's important for all of us to be here with steps.
That may also be true with respect to the Allen November event. I mean, advisory doesn't generally get started with us till 7:30. Allen's on at 6:30.
That would be great. So, we will all use our-
And it's right here, and we did that over-.
We'll use all of our time turners. Okay. Brookline Youth Awards, the Brookline High School Cherry Blossom Festival, the Brookline Mental Health Center event. There are lots of great events coming up in May. Ms. Charlofsky.
So, I have one more to add. So, I have one more to add. I think everybody got in their mailbox today. You might not have had a chance to look in your first-class mail. There's the Sixth Annual Bright Symposium at the high school that we're all invited to. I've gone for a number of years, and it's actually quite interesting to hear what we do and what other communities are doing. And there are now schools systems that have a bright program.
Terrific.
So, just make a plug for that. Eight fifteen in the morning at VHS in the MLK Room.
Terrific. Anything else?
And also, well, as long as we're on Brookline Mental Health Center, I just want to highlight the Mental Health Center Gala on May 9th. I think everybody also got invitations. If you didn't, I can certainly get you one.
And last, and perhaps most salient, is the town election on May 5th, 5:5. And if you are not in town on 5:5, please make sure that you go to the town clerk's office. Absentee voting has already begun, so if you will not be in town on 5:5, please make sure that you make your voice heard. Okay, anything else? Okay. So, then there's the consent agenda. We have just minutes to approve. Can I have a motion? Ms. Stone, seconded by Ms. Cox. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Terrific. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Chang, Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finance met last time on Monday, March 30th, and we had continuing robust discussions about the fiscal year '16 budget, which, again, reminding the public, we have basically two budgets, including one with and one without the override. And this budget will actually be voted on this evening. And I see on the agenda, there's some additional updates that Dr. Lupini will be providing. And lastly, the next finance subcommittee meeting has been rescheduled for Monday, May 4th. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pollak, capital improvements.
The schedule for the capital subcommittee has been changed. It is no longer meeting this coming Tuesday. Instead, it is meeting this coming Wednesday, the 14th, at the 15th?
Yeah.
Next Wednesday?
Yes.
The 15th at 4:30 PM.
Yes, 15th.
And the Devotion School Building Committee had a very lively value engineering session this morning, and we'll meet again next Thursday morning. And I would invite Ms. Cox to give us a more detailed report on the Devotion School Building Committee.
I'll just give a slightly more detailed report. So, our task today was to get the project back to the project budget that was proposed in November, which was $118,397,806. And through the process of schematic design, some of those costs had risen a bit, and so our job today, thanks to the school department, the building department, and the architects, was to take a list which had been very closely examined and bracketed into categories, and costs, and things that were recommended to be reduced. And the committee identified close to $1 million worth of cuts that got us back onto the budget. So, we're hoping that we will have a very smooth meeting next Thursday where we can vote that onto the MSBA.
Can you say something about the nature of the cuts?
Sure.
So, I have a list. I won't read the list, but-
Maybe I could help out with that.
Sure.
I think the things that we cut, sometimes architects put things in that they don't know we don't use, and/or that we don't necessarily need to have. And so, I think nothing in terms of function for the schools was cut from the project. And it was, were things that both the architects, the engineers felt, and Tony, and Charlie felt we could do without. One of the things was, the roof was a big thing. They had replaced the entire roof. Well, 20 years ago, we had replaced the backside of the roof, and Charlie really didn't feel it needed a full replacement. So, we have an allowance to, of $100,000, to repair any of the repairs that might need to happen. So, it's those sorts of things. It was actually quite a good meeting in terms of the things that were cut. Nothing in terms of durability. We were very careful about those things in terms of functionality was cut. And we're trying to maintain-
The design towards the program was all-
Huh?
The program stuff is all very much in-
Oh, that was totally different.
And does the, so I know that at the green charrette, there was some conversation about preparing a roof to be photo, solar ready?
Right.
And is that affected by the decisions about the roof that was made?
No. This was for the slate roof.
Oh, great, okay.
The slate roof wasn't getting a, I don't think they allow it on historic buildings, actually. So, no.
The other way we got there was with some changes in contingencies.
Yes.
Which was a major factor in this, but certainly within figures that I think people were comfortable with, the architects were comfortable recommending, that Tony was comfortable with us going with. They were in those ranges. And so, that helped us quite a bit in getting to this target number.
Great.
The million dollars, or the nine hundred and some thousand dollars, was material cuts from the build, from the construction. And then, the significant additional parts of closing the gap were in adjusting the contingencies, right?
And these are, I'm sorry to be dense about this, but, so, we're doing these cuts based on the preliminary cost estimates that we've gotten? And those are, what do, how do we, how do we deal with two different cost estimates in terms of value engineering? Which cost estimate do we go off of in order to know how much needs to be cut?
So, there were cost estimates done back in November, and that's where we got to the project budget that was sent to MSBA then of 18-plus, 18.9 million, or 118.9 million. There were both cost estimators, the architect's cost estimator and the town's cost estimator, did complete, brand-new estimates that are still warm, just, you know, finished last week or something, that had pushed the number all the way up to 125 million. And part of that process also is essentially, if you will, locking the two estimators in a room together and making them reconcile. So, that it is a bit of an art there, but essentially, the architects and the building department look very carefully with both cost estimators at both estimates, and then, at this preliminary stage, get them to agree, or sometimes just average them. It depends on how big the discrepancy is, how much energy is put into drilling down and reconciling them.
Okay. But in any event, our efforts right now are to walk back to the amount that everybody has been led to believe we were going to be working with, right?
Right. And so, that's the big story, is that the budget that was, the scope today was adjusted, including the adjustments to contingencies, which is important, to bring it to the same target that is consistent with the, all of the calculations that were done around the override. So, it's the same number. It's not, it hasn't gone up, right?
Great, okay.
And in an abundance of caution, actually, we went a little bit above to make sure that if the estimators were off a little, that we had some-
Extra cuts.
Cutting back, right?
A little bit extra cuts, yeah.
And we have, and we have this list still, that if there, if in the future there were unexpected circumstances, whatever, we still, you know, have something we might go back to.
Okay.
There would be more cost estimates. It's still-
More costs of the movement. No, I understand that, and we haven't even gone to construction documents and getting those spit out, and all of those things. No, I understand that. I just wanted to be clear about where we were, because we had heard about the, you know, to have budget creep at this point, I think, is not acceptable.
Right.
And so, as long as that's what we're going back to, that's terrific. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. I mean, to give you a couple of examples, and maybe Abby, you might want to add one, of factors that were cut that don't affect the program. There was in the budget, having brick walls on the roof set back where it wouldn't be visible from the street. And the budget cut was to just allow the membrane roofing to wrap up over that instead of putting the brick up there. So, everybody seemed to think that was a great idea. And then, there was some construction work that would have allowed the full loop of the driveway to be kept in use all the way through the phased construction period, even though, even though at the time of in question, the 1913 building would be closed and under construction. So, there wouldn't, it wouldn't be served by that loop, and over $100,000 was saved by allowing that road to be inaccessible during that phase of construction. That seemed like money well saved.
Thank you for all that detail. Appreciate you walking me through it.
And thank you for continuing to keep a sharp pencil, as it were, since we're still using pencils. Any other capital improvements, updates?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Curriculum. Ms. Charlofsky.
So, we're going to have a presentation tonight, and I think that our next meeting is scheduled for April 29th at 8:30.
Government relations. Ms. Stone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
To report. Policy. Ms. Cox.
Thank you. The policy subcommittee met yesterday. We continue to look at our admissions policy, which is mostly housekeeping, but we did get into a discussion and gained a deeper understanding of a very vital issue in Brookline, which has to do with permanent versus temporary residency. And because of our proximity to the Longwood Medical Area and the universities, we get a surprisingly large number of requests for temporary registration in our schools, and we're addressing a question of how the policy can respond to that. And ideally, in May, we will bring you a revised draft, mostly, again, to reflect some housekeeping around making sure that we're recognizing the role of our Office of Student Affairs, that has taken a large piece of the registration process, but also to see if we can help with that issue. And then, we also spent a little bit of time on the student attendance policy, which has been motivated, as I've said before, by changes to state regulations. And we understand that student handbooks across the schools are being reexamined to make sure there's consistency. We want to make sure that our policy will then also, that the handbooks will also be consistent with our policy, and looking at whether terminology is consistent in terms of how we use things like, terms like excused absences, unexcused absences, and the like. So, those, both of those conversations will continue at our next policy meeting.
Any other liaisons or updates? We covered some of them with the calendar, I think. Ms. Cott.
Just wanted to mention a couple of things that are updates, kind of updates as opposed to liaisons. Tuesday night, the 21st Century Fund had a very interesting panel discussion that talked about digital responsibility and use of the Internet. It was particularly interesting because there were two high school students on the panel, one of which was a young woman who had gone to, I believe it was Honduras, with her family, and was thinking about the digital availability of what she had versus what the people there had, and her involvement with the community. It was not a trip that was just a vacation. She went with her family, who were there for, doing medical work in Honduras. And the young man who spoke has started a blog at VHS called Portraits of VHS, which is similar to the Humans of New York. So, he is posting photos of VHS students with their consent, and then he engages them in conversation, and he posts them. And it was, the discussion around all of this talked about your identity on the web, how you thought about what people could read from what you did. People asked him what issues he had brought up, and one was that in some of the speeches, there had been swearing, and he had to make a decision as to whether to allow that up on his blog or not, and think about that in relation to college, and so forth, and so on. It was very interesting. And then, this morning, I went to the Wellness Summit at Brookline High School, where the discussion was around sexuality and Brookline teens. They opened with the, an act from the play Good Kids, which looked at the contrast, looked at the use of the phone, how a few years ago, if you got a call, if a girl got a call from a boy, it was exciting, they were dating, they were, it was very well done. But today, it's all about connection, and dating is no longer what they do. It's more hooking up, and then, that sort of morphed into a discussion of sexuality on the Internet. Very, very interesting presentation. The Brookline Police Department was there. There was talk about date rape. And it was clear to me that actually, in both of these events, with the kids who were involved, because there were peer leaders there, how very thoughtful these high school students were about the issues that they are facing around their use of the Internet, around their use of phones, and so forth. And although it was an odd combination to think about the two together, there was a thread that ran through, and you realize, first of all, how much the use of phones, Internet, computers has affected the lives of these kids, and the issues that have been brought up, as well as the kind of freedom it is they have to stay connected. So, it is fascinating. It is very impressive to see the work that is being done at the high school. And part of the task, and I had to leave a little early, but when I left the discussion was, what do we, as a community, need to have in place to help kids, to help kids in their exploration of all of these things, and in knowing what they should be doing? Teddy Jacobs talked about what we already teach, and so, it was a very fruitful program. I've gone to these wellness summits before, and they are always interesting and provoke one's thinking in important ways. So, not liaison, but just what's happening.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Charlofsky.
Just to add one comment. I was at the 21st Century Fund together with Ms. Cott, and what was really interesting is how important educating kids about technology is, and being good, and how you can follow your passion with technology, and how it can move things incredibly quickly, and how it can also have bad experiences. There was a mother who got up, who talked about kids who went to Syria because of the Internet, you know? And so, there's all these things that we, I think, have a responsibility to teach in our technology, and to make kids aware of in that. And I'm not sure that with what we have now, we're able to do that, and I'm hoping that we will be able to in the near future.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. We're five minutes early, but public comment is our next agenda item. If anyone has signed up for public comment. Thank you. We have one person signed up. Harvey Reuven, from the Brookline Youth Awards.
How are you? Hey, Rebecca.
Thanks for coming.
Rebecca and I spoke earlier in the week, and so, we're, now we know what each other looks like. For the last five years, and this is the fifth year, I've put an event on at the Coolidge Corner Theater called the Brookline Youth Awards. And it's, I'm a video producer. I own a company called Advanced Digital Websites, and I also have been a video producer for the last 25 years. I'm working with the town on another project to produce a documentary for the town of Brookline about Brookline residents that have survived the Holocaust. So, the genesis of this was to put on an event that promoted young people and gave attention to young people for the good things that they did. I felt at that time that there was a lot, it seemed like when I heard about young people, it was on television for things that they had done wrong. And as a father of a 28-year-old, who was a teenager at one time, I know that teenagers can do some pretty amazing things, and young people can do amazing things. So, what the awards are, teachers, administrators, parents, students, residents of Brookline, write essays about teenagers between the ages of 13 and 19, who either live in Brookline or go to school in Brookline. And some of the nominations are amazing. There are no criteria for an award. We like to say that we don't fit the student to match the award. We fit the award to match the student. So, if you can write an essay about some, a young person who has done something that you feel is worthy of emulation, some of the young people that we've given award to, I think, will be university president someday, and others are fighting tremendous adversity, and have showed courage in big and small ways, and have done amazing things for other people. So, this year, we've got over 40 nominations, but when I say over 40, most of these nominations are two full pages of essays. People really spending a lot of time. And we also promote organizations that help young people. Last year, we focused on Steps to Success. This year, it'll be Brookline Literacy Partnership. And we have two awards that go to adults. One of them was started last year, and I'm a little nervous, so I forget her name. I'm so sorry. The woman that owns Irving's, Ethel Weiss, turned 100 last year, and she had been, still was, she has run Irving's since January of 1939, working with young people. So, she was the first winner of the Ethel Weiss Business Award for business people that go the extra mile for young people. And this year's recipient of the Ethel Weiss Award will be Chobi Hoy, who I, and who is, never says no to young people that seek her help. And then, we also have a social justice award that was, the genesis of which was the, we seem to get a lot of nominees from either Steps to Success or from these social justice programs in the town. Roger Grandy, Kate Leslie, they founded these amazing social justice clubs. And so, we have a social justice award every year, and Roger Grandy was the first recipient, and Kate Leslie of the high school was the second, and Paul Epstein was the third, and we have yet to pick this year's. We also choose a youth of the year at the end of the evening. To be honest with you, we choose it because, to make sure that the little groups that are there to support each one of the recipients doesn't leave before the end. To see who the youth of the year is. And it's been a really great experience for me. I hope you can make it. I have young people last five years that are in college that email me and write me notes and stay in touch. And Ben Hoff, who was the 2013 Youth of the Year, actually flew from Rice University back home so that he could be the host last year, at his own expense, his parents' expense. It was pretty special. If there's any questions, I haven't been to, I'm really honored to be here, and I'm not sure how this works, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or things that you'd like me to do better, I'd be glad to do that.
Usually, people come here to tell us things that we can do better. So, it's a breath of fresh air. Normally, we don't respond to public comment, but if there are specific questions, I'm sure people will email them to you. But thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. We're excited. Sorry, what?
Eight o'clock, Coolidge Corner Theater, 7:00.
Yeah, the date is, yep, the date is on the calendar. I think we mentioned it earlier.
We did.
I think we did. Called it out.
Thanks very much.
Earlier. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. All right. If anyone, the only person signed up for public comment. If there's anyone else who would like to make public comment, who is here? Okay. Thank you. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is our student report from the budding journalistic prize winner, future prize winner, Mr. Khan.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to announce that Day of Dialogue is next week, which is put on by the Gay Trans Straight Alliance, and it's a full day of assemblies, and it's on a whole range of queer topics, and it's, always has a great turnout. The auditorium's often packed, and I think they're really great. And that's next Thursday. And in legislature, we're talking about the Ns and how they compute into the GPA. You know, Mr. Mason and Ms. Holman knows this thing where, an N is a failing grade due to excessive absence, and it's not calculated into the GPA at this point. And we're trying to figure out how it will go into it, and we don't really have a consensus yet, but I'll get back to you when we do. And the schedules are being run earlier this year than previous years, and hopefully, it will help avoid some of the problems with scheduling, because in the past, there's been last-minute changes, and because it will be harder to change courses as the school becomes fuller, more full, we hope that we can iron out the kinks before students get there next year. And then, also, the fourth quarter starts next week, and all I have to say about that is wow, because the seniors are almost graduating. And then, the last thing I have-
Almost.
Almost, yeah. Almost. And then, the last thing I have is, two weeks ago, I made my report, and I was talking about race. Ms. Stone, you asked me what the school committee should do about race topics, and what I'm thinking is, I think, just conversation with students- thinking is, I think, just conversation with students, because there's, there's a lot of forums where we talk about race at the high school. There's Race Reels, there's Asking for Courage Day, there's Race Committees and all this stuff, and I think students really want to have a dialogue, because otherwise, it's just statistics, and it doesn't really come to the students, and a lot of students have really interesting, really important things to say about race. And we make a lot of reports about, like, statistics with hiring and all that stuff, but like, to be honest, I don't think a lot of students watch the school committees.
Really?
Yeah, I know. What a shock, but.
They don't?
I know. And.
I actually have a comment to make about that a little bit later.
So I think having a dialogue and coming to school and talking to students will be one of the best ways to really figure out what, what race topics we're talking about and how we should address them. That's all.
Terrific. I will save mine for the end. Questions for our student representative? So I have two comments to make. One was, I'm still getting feedback on your comments about the race dialogues at the high school, so thank you for that. I think we're still talking about it. We've had very continuing conversations of how important these issues are, about how we can structurally sort of pay attention to them, and so we are continuing to move that forward also, and Dr. Lupina might say anything about that later. But they're really, really important, and we want to figure out the right way to do that. The only other thing I will say is that one of the innovative ideas we had about trying to get more people to watch a school committee meeting, or at least figure out who was watching it, was to, about 45 minutes in, put a little, ask the Brookline Interactive Group to put a little runner on the bottom that says, if you are still watching at this point, text this number, and we will give you a $5 gift certificate to the Brookline Booksmith, which is enough that like, maybe people would do it, and then we could actually have a sense of how many people were watching our school committee meeting.
Excuse me. What budget are we using?
Yeah, we don't have a budget for that.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't implement this. This was an innovation that we didn't implement. But anyway, we were.
School committee chairman's budget.
Yes, exactly. But the non-existent school committee chairman's budget, from which, as you all recall, we excise cookies from the, from our meals. But anyway, thank you for that. And in all seriousness, I think we would be quite interested in figuring out ways to have dialogue with the students on this, so thank you. Anything else? Well, at some point, you'll have to bring us back a report on the hackathon. I was very excited to see an announcement of that in the SAG.
I just realized I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? Okay.
I do, I have a question. So you mentioned the Day of Dialogue, which I'm very familiar with. There used to be a Day of Silence, wasn't there?
Oh, yeah.
Does that still exist?
The Day of Silence is the day after, and the Day of Silence is more, is a national thing where students can wear a sticker saying, "Local or Silent Supporter," and it's supposed to bring attention to students that feel like they can't talk due to prejudice or oppression due to their sexual orientation. And then Day of Dialogue was started, I think, by, I don't remember, I don't know exactly when it started, but it started many years ago, and the idea is that the silence is a lot more effective if we talk about why we're being silent before.
Good. Okay. Thank you. And will you report back to us on the hackathon?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
Does everybody know something?
This Saturday, I think from like nine to four or something, at the high school, there's a hackathon, and I think, I don't know so many details about it, but I think it's organized by advisor, the science curriculum coordinator, possibly, and people from MIT are coming, and it's ways to cultivate ideas, and I think it's about ways to improve the school.
Right. So, be excited to hear. All right. Thank you. So we're now running, for the record, 15 minutes ahead of schedule.
You said it out loud.
I did, yeah, no, knock wood. The superintendent's report.
My goal is to make you, make sure you're half an hour ahead till I'm finished. I really, so I'm going to actually combine these next two items, because they, they do sort of, one leads to the other, and I'll skip around the formal report that I gave you, so that I can get to some of the budget items more toward the end of this report. So I want to start with the Heath School Leadership. As we discussed the last time we were together, Carrie Wilson has resigned effective at the end of the year as principal at Heath School, and we explored a number of options for the school. And among those, we spoke with some consultants about assisting us if we were to go forward with a search this, this year. They told us two things, that first of all, April's very late to mount a principal search, and second of all, that if we were enamored with a number of our vice principals, and we are, that we should give some of those people an opportunity to move into some of these roles, if even only on an interim basis. Off of that, and off of conversations with PTO, some leaders in terms of the staff, I announced on Wednesday that we had appointed Annie Savalius, who currently serves as the vice principal at the Heath School, to be the interim principal for next year. We will begin a principal search process in November of next year, where we will begin to engage the community in a process that will involve staff, parents, and students. We will also be bringing in an interim vice principal, excuse me, to serve in Annie's place for the year. I've had a number of conversations with her about that. We are looking at some of the people who we've talked to and some others who've retired recently to fill that role for the year. So we're very pleased that Annie has agreed to take on this role. As you know, when we hired Annie as, as vice principal, she had, prior to coming to Brookline, served as principal of the Conservatory Lab Charter School in Boston, and has done a great job in her work at Heath to date. Second, I just reiterate the Allen November piece, we're really thrilled that Allen is here, a great deal of time this month working with principals, with coordinators, and agreed to do this community event. Allen has done this work across the country, as you know, is a terrific, engaging presenter, and we think it's a great opportunity for community to, to share an evening with Allen. Third, I want to talk about elementary classroom consolidations. As you know, the FY16 No Override Budget included three areas that impact staffing. First is the consolidation of five elementary classes. Second is the consolidation of five positions at Brookline High School, 5.0 FTE, I should say, because it may end up being more, impacting more positions. And third of all, impacted the enrichment and challenge support program, thereby eliminating that program in the No Override Spending Plan. Our people have been doing amazing work at trying to implement pieces of both of these budgets, which is very, very difficult to do. In order to be able to move ahead with placing staff who might be bumped by these consolidations, we've tried to implement, to identify them sooner rather than later. It will give principals the best chance that they have to fill positions that truly are open, and it will let people know where they have a position. I will say also, we've tried to keep people in the same building where it's possible, and it may not be possible in all cases. So, I want to, before I even talk at all about this, I want to say a word about this Dr. Allen and the work that they've done. Dr. Allen sort of presented for us today at senior staff the fallout, if you will, of these five consolidations, and her conversations with ECS teachers, and where the openings are, where people would be placed. And they've done great work in really setting principals up to be able to move forward with positions that in either budget are truly open. And that's great, because it's the only chance we have, I believe, given that whatever budget we end up implementing, we will be implementing so late. As I've said to a number of groups over the last two, two weeks, I believe, way too late. So, what we've done in terms of this examination is work with principals over the past months to identify these sections, and we focused on enrollments, including the number of students with IEPs, those served through ELL, and students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. We've looked at achievement data, including MCAS, where it's available to us, and we've looked at the classroom experience of teachers in the receiving grade levels. After considering those factors, we've identified the following grade levels in schools for consolidation in the No Override Budget scenario. And we will, we've been talking with staff, staff are aware, and we have a letter to this effect that will go to all parents tomorrow morning. And I'll give you a little bit more beyond this. What I won't do is talk about these numbers. I hope, I hope you will understand this. I won't talk about the numbers in some of these categories, numbers of students with IEPs, ELL, free and reduced lunch, those kinds of things, but please know that we've taken those numbers into account very seriously in this examination. So, the first consolidation would be Baker Grade Three, or Grade Four, excuse me, which currently is four sections for 74 students, and will be three, three sections. There are other mitigating factors in, in that, in that grade level that we had to pay particular attention to, but it is 74 students, currently four sections will go to three. The second is Devotion Grade Four, meaning Grade Five for next year. That is 76 students in four sections that will go to three. The third is Grade Three at Heath School, that is, the, next year's Grade Four. That is 59 students and currently two sections. So yes, that creates a section of 29 and a section of 30 at the Heath School. The next is the Lawrence School Grade Seven. That will take, it's 55 students, and it will mean three sections, what would have been three sections, and again, this was an addition in the budget. That addition goes away, and it's three sections that will be two. And the last.
How many students was that?
Fifty-five, sorry. And the last is Lincoln School, second grade, second going to third, and that is 81 students. It will be four sections going to three. And let me say a word about that, because one of the things I said originally was that we would stay away from where we could, primary-level classes. The other factor that we paid attention to here were what we called bubble sections. So where we have one section of more, one grade level of more sections than the other grade levels in the school, we took a look at that and took a look at the other data around that, and third grade being right at the edge of the primary grades. We worked really closely with the principal and thought this was the best of our remaining choices. So, next year's fifth grade at Baker, next year's fifth grade at Devotion, next year's fourth grade at Heath School, next year's eighth grade at Lawrence School, next year's third grade at Lincoln School, will all experience a consolidation of what would have been in place, in four of the five cases, what is in place, and a reduction of sections. In addition, the No Override Spending Plan, as I said earlier, also has five consolidations at Brookline High School and the elimination of the enrichment and challenge support program, and so we still have a number of placements yet to go. Dr. Allen has met individually with each of the ECS teachers to explore the possibilities in terms of their license and where, where we might be able to place them. And Ms. Holman is in the process of identifying the 5.0 FTE that would be a reduction at Brookline High School, and we expect to have that conversation within the next two weeks. Again, said this earlier, but remember that the Override Spending Plan does not include any of these consolidations and program changes, and so we are at the same time proceeding with principals in what that would look like, and that will require some undoing. I said to Dr. Allen today, I don't think it's a political statement, but we are, we may be creating a set of scenarios and placing people in something that we actually, on May the 6th, aren't implementing. The fourth item is, is going back to what's actually listed as the first item in the report, and that's the Devotion School Leadership. And what we've done here is to do a couple things, try to look at some very talented people, as I said earlier, who we have working with us now, and also keep Dr. Connolly involved, even though he has indicated to us he is interested in doing something less than full-time in the coming years. And so for 1516, as you're aware, Monica Crowley will serve as principal of upper Devotion at OLS. Dave O'Hare has agreed to be the principal of the intermediate grades, grades three through six. Jen Buehler will serve as principal of the primary grades, and Joe Connolly will continue to work with us in a less-than-full-time capacity, focused primarily on the building project, and mentoring our primary and intermediate school principals. 1617, same structure, except that Mr. O'Hare will only work with, will only work with grades three and four, and he will manage whatever transition and building needs we have at lower Devotion in whatever site we happen to be, again, assuming that that project goes forward. I want to point out in this that there are, there is not a vice principal position in this model. And so, you know, I'm pretty sensitive to comments that say we've added all kinds of administration at the Devotion School, as I saw in one report the other day. That's not true. We actually have these three individuals but functioning in different roles, we believe that best meet the needs of the school during an upcoming renovation and addition project, with Mr., with Dr. Connolly, supporting them, and also continuing to work with the building committee in a role that allows them to serve in the buildings. That was our goal, and we believe we've achieved that with three really terrific people, who all bring great and different strengths to the table, that will benefit our students during the time that we have them split into a number of locations at the school. So I'm, I'm very, first of all, about both of these, these situations, I'm, I'm pleased that we have great people who are in the vice principalship, who are willing to step up and help us in these roles, in Annie's case, for one year, in Jen and Dave's case, for three years. And we're very lucky to have people like Joe Connolly and other people who are retired, who like to come and work with us, right, in, in a variety of roles, and support our principals, and take over interim roles for some number, some number of years. We've been very lucky to work with people like Steve Silvestri, and John Ritchie, and Joe Connolly, and those kind of people who've come and really helped us out. So, and that leads me to the budget associated with Devotion. See how I made that transition? Yeah, good. Okay, I can stop there, sure.
Okay, finish.
Okay. Thank you. So, so this is the, this is the beginning of the budget report. So, you know, one very important question is, so what does this model at Devotion look like in terms of both the override and no override scenario? And I can go through it if you'd like, but, but the summary is that when compared to the no override scenario, this model actually represents an increased cost of $13,000. And we believe we can address that within, within dollars available to us. The, in terms of the override scenario, it represents, in terms of the original budget put forward, a savings of $116,000. Okay? And that's even with, with the, that's with adding the vice principal, as is, as is indicated there, at old Lincoln School that would continue on. It represents a savings of $116,000. So there's $116,000 that we add to contingencies in the, in the override scenario based on this model. So I should stop there before I go on to the last part of this budget update, and see if you have any questions on any of the three or four topics that I've addressed so far.
Ms. Stone.
Madam Chair. So, a couple of things. I, I know I registered this with you before the email, but in terms of the consolidations, and I'm hoping that the conversation is premature and will eventually not be even necessary to have, but the larger classes in particular, the one that you described as being 29 or 30 students, the, the obvious things that we've talked about over time are what happens to the, to the quality of education in those classrooms. And as I said, I know that we're not in a position to talk about it, but, but I just hope that we would be thinking about in the future, even under a no override scenario, if the budget could possibly break our way in some other way, that we would think about how we would support the teachers in those classrooms, possibly with, possibly with Paris. I understand Paris are not, not. I understand Paris are not, not inexpensive and, and that there may not be any way. I'm just thinking, we, I think we need to think very, very carefully and very strategically about how to give extra support to the teachers who would be taking on those larger classes.
Yes is the answer. We, if you recall, we, we, we set aside a contingency that we believe is directly attributable to the referral needs, other kinds of needs associated with these larger classes. I don't, I don't think, I don't think that paraprofessionals are, are a, are a great class size reduction strategy. Evidence is pretty clear that, right, that doesn't work, but, but we will have some larger groups. Yeah, I mean, that's going to take us some time. We really don't have those answers right now because that budget is very tight.
No, no, understood. I, I really just wanted to register that.
Yep.
That, I don't think that we can talk about class sizes that big without making sure that that's, that that's a target for conversation and, and some kind of action that-
Right.
-that we would need to take. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, it actually came up last night in a question from a high school student who was at the League of Women Voters debate, who mentioned in the question that there was an AP math class, AP calculus class, I believe, at the high school this year with 31 students in it. And that struck me as much larger than what I thought was happening already at the high school, and I wondered if you knew about it or could give us any information.
So I don't. My guess is that it's a singleton. And it, it, you know, once classes start out in a schedule, having done that a long time ago, and when classes start out as a singleton and get to a certain point, because of the makeup of student schedules in the rest of their schedule, it becomes very difficult, even if you have the staffing, and we would have had the staffing at a point too, to do that this year, it becomes very difficult to schedule a different section to do that, both in terms of the staff and when they teach, and in terms of the student schedules if you try to move it to another period. So I, and, and sometimes those numbers climb during, although that's not the kind of class that you would necessarily see them climb during the year. So, so I don't know. I mean, I know that some of those classes do, from time to time, get up to that 29, 28 to 30 range because they happen to be singletons. So I'll, I'm, I can ask, but that's my guess.
I was just curious how many, I mean, because this question came up, it made me curious how many instances of class sizes that big at the high school we had.
There aren't very many. I mean, I mean, one of the things I think that our consultants, I think it was part of their presentation, I've seen their presentation so many times now, I forget where they presented this. We have what they characterized as a significant number of singletons in our, in our schedule. And singletons both clog up schedules, number one, and, and number two, they create these kind of scenarios from time to time, because it is much harder to add sections when you've gotten past the point where students have done sort of their initial registration. One of the things about growth is we will probably have less singletons at the high school. That's not great comfort, I know.
Well, also AP classes are a little bit different from other classes-
Right.
...in terms of their ability to handle larger class sizes. It's not that you ever want ones ballooning out, but they are-
Right.
-different.
Right.
Right, no, no, I under, I understand that. I think the, the questioner, it was a, it was a question read to us, so I don't know the questioner, but the implication of the question was that particularly in highly challenging classes like that, having that many students competing for the teacher's help and attention during the class is, is very frustrating. And so I, it made me want to ask the question.
Ms. Cato?
Looking at these consolidations, I'm wondering at, I'm wondering about the point at which you will reconsider not making the consolidation, and by that I'm thinking of new enrollments coming in. Have you given thought to, I mean, if two more kids come in that grade level, or three, or does that vary from grade to grade? How will that issue be dealt with?
So, it's a really good question. There, there is no number, is the, is the first part of the answer, right? The second part of the answer is, we've, we've already taken a look at the history of these schools, because they're each a little different, and these grade levels, and they're each a little different. And we know that there, this isn't, this isn't directly an answer to your question, but we know that there are certain of the five that we're going to have to watch much closer than others. So, we have backup plans, I guess is the, is the best way to answer your question. We, we have a six and seven, right, that we, that we'll have to continue to look at if, for example, I mean, I'll, it's an easy one to name because I think everybody at the table knows it. Baker can experience pretty significant changes, right? Even in these grades, even in these intermediate grades. And, you know, if, a number of years ago, I think in fifth grade or sixth grade, we registered 12, an increase of 12 students. I don't know how many new students we registered, but we registered an increase of 12. So, there's a simple answer to your question, is that would get my attention.
Right.
Right? And would make us look somewhere, so we've identified other, other grade levels where we might have to look. Again, what we were trying to do here, and of course that will drive poor Dr. Allen and the principals crazy as they think about the staffing implications of what I'm saying to you right now, but, but we may, we may need to do that. And we've actually had conversations about six and seven and how we would make those changes as well.
Thank you.
So I just want to just tie a couple of things together because I think that things that you've said tie directly into broader community conversations right now, so if it's okay, can I build a couple of links?
Sure.
I mean, one is, I mean, the concept of singletons is great in the abstract, but let's just remember that the value of having them is it's an increase in course diversity.
Right.
Meaning that it's a one section of a particular kind of a class, that if it goes away, means that that class is no longer offered at all for students. So I just want to, it's not like there are two or three sections that a student could go into. So I think that while we, while we talk about reducing the number of singletons to increase efficiency, the cost is that there are fewer opportunities for children, for, for, for high school students to take interesting classes that are engaging to them or important to them.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
We, we don't talk about reducing the number of singletons, unless they become more than a single section, because, because in that presentation, and again, I can't remember whether it was here or somewhere else, the community presentation or whatever, that was coupled with the fact that Brookline High School, and we're proud of this, right, offers a wide variety-
Exactly.
...of course offerings for kids, more than they see in many of the high schools, in most of the high schools that they do work with. And I think we're pretty proud of that.
I think we are proud of that. I just, I just wanted to make it, just draw that linkage for people, that this is actually a reason why we keep things that are expensive because they are good for students and they engage them. I mean, a, a second thing that we've had a lot of discussions about is how important, you know, leadership is. And so we, I just, I just want to extend a personal thanks to Annie, to Dave, to Jen, to Monica, to Joe Connolly, all of the people who are rising into leadership positions in these buildings. I mean, they are an incredibly strong group of people to be, to stepping into these principal roles. And I think that there's been so much discussion about how important it is that the community feels like they are heard in these conversations, and I think if you were to ask people in the Heath community how they feel about Annie taking over, I have heard nothing but really, really exciting, positive comments about Annie. And I've heard terrific things about Dave and Jen from the, from the devotion community, and Joe, obviously, and, you know, Monica from the Lawrence community was almost, you know, sainthood, I mean, it was, sainthood was almost bestowed upon her. So I just, I really want to note, just pause for a minute and note that, because this is, these are five incredibly strong people, and I think each of the parent communities who've had direct access and direct experience with them are very, very pleased about that. So I just want to say thank you to, to them. Thank you, Dr. Allen, for your part in all of this, and just thank you for, for, for them being engaged. The second, the third thing I want to say is the, about the class size, you know, the consolidations. I mean, consolidations is this abstract word, it's a budget word, but what it really, really means is class size go up.
Yes.
Class size goes up a lot.
Yes.
And I think it's very difficult for us to contemplate that when we have spent year after year after year protecting small class sizes here, and it's a bedrock of what we've built. It's incredibly hard to sit here and say, ah, yes, for these dozen plus children, you know, classrooms of children across the district, what are we adding up to? 12, sick, uh, 12, almost more than, so what, 18?
18 go to, 18 go to 13.
So 18, 18 classrooms of children around this district, it's not just five grade levels, it's 18 classrooms of children that are affected, of, you know, 20 plus each. That is, there's hundreds of children. And I guess I just want to make that real because abstract questions about increasing class size or consolidations can seem not very tangible, but then you say it's 18 classrooms of, you know, children who are going to be in significantly larger classrooms, that's real, and it's just, it hurts, in a sense, because this is what we've been trying to build for so long. So I don't, I didn't want that to pass unnoted, because it hurts. The last thing I'll say is the, the technology plan has been a complete, it's been a very robust topic of conversation in the town. And so it's exciting to see some of the things that we will be able to do. I know we're going to talk about that later tonight, which is terrific, and I just want to just underscore how lucky we are to have someone like Alan November who is advising us. And I know you, you mentioned it briefly, we mentioned it in the calendar item, but I really do hope that the Brookline Interactive Group tapes it because he really is widely recognized as a leader in education technology. He has informed so much of our thinking and just how he thinks about making things better, not just different with technology, and the types of examples he uses and the best practice he's brought to us from all around the country are really exciting. So I'm, I'm excited that he's going to come, I'm excited that he knows us so well and can help comment on where are the places where just the bar is going up around the world, and where are places where we can learn from others and, and start building that in here. So I'm, I'm excited about that.
Thanks. Thanks to the BEF, who really-
Always.
...allowed that to happen. So the other piece under budget, under the budget update that I want to share with you is really from the superintendent's message under administration, where the budget message says the following. "Our central administration staffing levels have remained largely the same for more than 10 years. As noted in my FY15 message, we are no longer able to sustain the responsibilities of a school system of nearly 8,000 students within the capacity built for a district of 5,000, while mandates from state and federal authorities are requiring significant attention. Therefore, realignment and new positions must be considered." We, we said we would provide details later and that the anticipated cost of these positions was $250,000, and put in there as a placeholder in that budget. I want to talk with you briefly about that this evening. "For the past months, the Collins management group has been studying our central administration structure, positions, and processes in an effort to identify best practices, areas of possible efficiency, and areas of need. While we do not yet have the final report, we have been able to zero in on the first two positions, and as I've told you before, there are total three identified within the three-year override plan. We've been able to zero in on the first two positions for implementation in FY16. After meeting with Collins representatives yesterday, I'm confident that these recommendations are consistent with the focus and the preliminary findings and recommendations from Collins. Over the next two weeks, we will receive a preliminary report from Collins, which I will be able to use with senior staff to make specific recommendations for organization structure, new positions, and possible consolidations, and an overall implementation timeline. I expect to provide specific recommendations addressing each of these topics to you, the school committee, at the end of April. You will hear their report in May. The two positions being recommended for FY16 will not be formalized and advertised until after we've presented a proposed organization structure and overall plan, even though we hope you include them as part of the adoption of the budget this evening." So, two, two, two areas. The fir, first area has to do with our, with our curriculum instruction and program. One of the things that we've talked with you often about over the last number of months are the number of direct reports for a number of people, primarily the assistant superintendent for student services, the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, and the superintendent. The direct, the, the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, I believe, is somewhere over 15 direct reports in this organization now, a number that is undoable. "We are proposing a position of director of curriculum instruction and program. Under the direction of the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, this individual would coordinate specific K-8 programs, including the enrichment and challenge support and English language learner program, and specific K-8 and K-12 curriculum areas, including elementary world language, health and physical education, fine arts, and performing arts. They would evaluate and supervise homeschool applications and programs, our homeschool program. They would, they would coordinate out-of-school time programs and activities. Many of you know, we have a, we had a very robust out-of-school time report put forward through program review a number of years ago that a number of people continue to ask me when we're going to implement. The answer is under the override study committee right now. They would supervise and evaluate the following program and curricul, program and curriculum coordinators: enrichment and challenge support, English language learners, elementary world language, health and physical education, fine arts, and performing arts. This is one of those positions, though, where I also need to say to you that this position would allow the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning to do their job. They would do that by allowing the deputy superintendent to focus on curriculum design and services, to focus on the coordination of, of specific K-8 and K-12 curriculum areas, including English language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, and education technology. They would allow Dr. Fisher Mueller to, to be responsible for monitoring, evaluating an improvement of elementary and secondary instruction. They would allow her to be responsible for up to four principal evaluations per year as specified by the superintendent, thereby reducing the load of direct reports on the superintendent. And she would supervise the work of the director of professional learning and director of curriculum instruction and program, in addition to those curriculum and program areas that I mentioned a moment ago." So position one that we are recommending is director of curriculum instruction and program. And again, under the timeline that I spelled out earlier, that is, for us to come back to you at the end of April with more on the specific recommendations, the possible consolidations, new positions, and the implementation plan over the next three years. Yes?
Just on that position, you said that the, I think it's, the deputy superintendent is currently has 15 direct reports? Is that what you said?
It's 15, is it 15? It's somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18, yes.
16.
I don't have 16, thank you. 15 to 18.
And with this new position, how many of those direct reports will be shifted? So what, what does that go down to for the deputy superintendent?
Let me answer the latter question. It's easier for me. The, the deputy superintendent is responsible for, in terms of direct reports, for the director of curriculum instruction and program, the director of professional learning, and these five program areas, the five program areas that I mentioned of English language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, and education technology. I believe that makes seven to eight.
So it takes down to seven, and then you said-
And, and, and-
...that there would also be four principal evaluations-
But there are evaluations, yes.
...the different, right.
It's a different type of responsibility.
Okay.
So 16 to seven?
Yes.
Okay. And do all-
Plus four evaluations.
And do you, do you envision that all nine other ones would go to the new director position, or are they, are they divided?
There's some other movement that we'll propose in, in that reorg.
Okay.
The answer is largely yes.
Right, okay.
The answer is largely yes, although there are some that are shifted to student services and the other position I'm about to talk with you about.
Okay, great, thank you.
And again, I'm not trying to answer those questions tonight. Again, I want to have the report in front of me, I want to be able to bring you an implementation plan and the, and the sort of three-year view of, of all of this.
Understood. I just wanted the, the-
Yep.
...the big impact was what I was looking for, so thank you for that.
So I think the second position speaks to a number of issues that we've been talking about and the community's been talking about. I want to say one thing before I, before I say this. When you see the report from the consultants, you will see recommendations for positions like chief of staff. You will see recommendations for positions like communication director. Because those, because they believe, based on their examination of like districts in other parts of the country, including in other parts of the country, that that's what a district of this complexity, that that's what a district of this size needs. We're not bringing forward those and won't bring those forward in this. What we know we've had to do is look at a number of functions, and I want to mention one other one too, before I mention this position. one other one, too, before I mention this position. What we know we need to be charged with doing is finding economical ways to find those functions. And that's what we believe we've done. And the third one I want to mention is, you know, the examination of districts, some that we gave them, some that they've done in terms of comparisons, have, in many of those districts, a Director of Diversity. Which, again, speaks to a number of issues we've talked about. We think accountability is also a major issue, and one that we've talked about with them. And so, we are proposing the position of Deputy Superintendent for Equity and Accountability. Under the direction of the Superintendent of Schools, this individual would oversee system, school, and program accountability to our strategic plan. They would oversee development and measurement of progress against annual objectives and goals, including mandated district progress measures, central administration and school and principal goals, grant funding, diversity in hiring, system efforts in cultural competency, and student and staff equity. They would work with the Superintendent and School Committee to review and/or develop system policies and related administrative procedures. They would assist the Superintendent in the design and implementation of internal and external communication efforts, especially pertaining to program evaluation and reporting. And as, right now, as direct reports, they would have at least the Director of Research and Accountability, and the Director of Program Review and Grants. They become our accountability arm, they become our diversity arm. We think this is a really critical function, and combine some of the conversation that we've had with our consultants to date, and I think you'll see that when you see their report. By the way, these moves leave the Superintendent in the neighborhood of ten to twelve direct reports, evaluations. So, we've lowered those numbers, we've accomplished one of the major goals, which was around the Deputy Superintendent and the Superintendent. So, again, I'm really looking forward to coming back in the week after our school vacation, and talking more specifically about other, and there are consolidations, we believe. There are areas that we can look at over time, and we'll talk about those. We'll talk about that third position that's in this override spending plan, because remember, this is an override proposal. We'll talk about implementation timeline of those pieces, and then you'll hear from the consultants and the report. Happy to try to answer any other questions you may have about these recommendations.
A tiny question, Ms. Stone.
Do we have a formal liaison role anywhere in our current staffing that works with the Department of, the new Department of Inclusion and, what is it called? What is Lloyd Gellin's department called?
Diversity Inclusion and...
We do not.
And, so, I was just thinking about...
Let me say it this way, it's not a tiny question. It's been, there are a number of occasions where that's occurred in more of an informal basis. It's quite frankly largely occurred, in some cases, through Student Services or through HR.
Through HR, right, and those are the two places that make the most sense. And I know that when the town meeting and when the town side was talking about the creation of that department, it was pretty clear that they are looking across systems and across work, and so it would make a lot of sense to me if we didn't have one person assigned. But I just thought that there might be an opportunity with a new position like this for there to be just a more formal contact, just so...
Yeah, I think there is. I mean, I think the other piece of this is, absolutely is the answer to that question. I think the other piece is, if, and I think, I think we all agree on this, I think you probably do as well. I mean, if we've learned anything from the last two and a half years, it's about sort of the appetite for data and accountability on behalf of our programs, on behalf of what we're achieving. I quite frankly think we've done a pretty good job with what we have here, right? In that growth of the district, in terms of what we produce at school in Brookline and other ways. But I also think we can do more. I think one of the consultants, and again, I don't want to steal all their thunder, but one of the things they will talk with you about is about not having the people who are actually doing the work also involved in holding the organization accountable for the work. And we believe that accomplishes, this accomplishes that, and I think we all share that view that that's an improvement to what we do.
I just want to say that the Chair said earlier about how painful it was to look at class size, is one of the more painful conversations that I've been having with people during the whole override debate is the accusation, which is out there a lot, that the schools are not doing a particularly good job of being data-driven, or of looking at our accomplishments, or of tracking the achievements of any given curriculum or any given program. And just echoing what you just said, because I know, just in the decade that I've been on this board, we have come light years from where we were when I joined, when, I remember, in fact, the year before I came on to the school committee, asking a principal what the relationship was between the math curriculum in the elementary school where my children went to school, and the math curriculum that they would be having at the high school. That principal could not answer the question. And that was just eleven years ago. And so, at this point, where we have coordinated curriculum, where we have the funnel that I was describing at the time, of where our elementary schools really are preparing our kids for the curriculum that they will be offered at the high school, where all of the teachers actually talk to each other and understand something about what's going on, where one school is, in fact, implementing the same curriculum that another school was going, so that it does mean that when you come to school in Brookline, you are getting something that can be defined. The fact that we put out at school in Brookline with metrics assigned to a strategic plan, which we created for the first time with all of those goals, I mean, the amount of data-driven attention to, and program review, which I know was in place right before I came on to the school committee, but was really only just gotten started, because I think I was here for the first report of those first program reviews, the fact that we actually do much more rigorous assessment of our curriculum with specific goals for what they're supposed to achieve, and we measure and hold ourselves accountable for whether or not they're achieving them. So, it is painful to me when people out in the community are told, and they don't have that kind of response to it, that we are somehow not sufficiently attentive to whether or not we are achieving what we are seeking to achieve, because I think we always have more to do, we can always be more rigorous, there are always things we can put into place. But the distance we have come, and certainly the trajectory, is extraordinary, and I think that that's owing largely to you and your staff, and the work that you all have been doing under extraordinary circumstances. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that.
That actually may be a communication issue. I'm sorry, I just really felt the need to say that. As much as anything else, I think some of it is a communication issue.
Dr. Jackson?
So, I want to say two things as a precursor to then what I really want to say. One is I'm very excited about both positions, and I'm very excited about the chance for the school administration to be right-sized, to not only the size of the district, but to our strategic plan and our strategic goals. And I think these positions will go a long way to doing that. Since Jenna just tweeted about an equity and accountability position, and referenced diversity in the same sentence, I want to caution us not to too tightly tie those two concepts together. Diversity is not equity, equity is not diversity, and I don't want this position to become a bucket for everybody's concern, either about race-specific or diversity general. And I think we will have to work hard to figure out how to both do those, address those issues, as we address broader equity issues that are related, but not always one in the same. And so, I do think we'll have to figure out how to have some real liaison to the work around diversity in the community, how to have conversations about race and student experience, as well as an equity that is driven by data. And so, I'm looking forward to those conversations, but I do think it's important for folks to try and keep those separate but connected in definition.
Would you talk a little bit more about that? I think we've had that conversation here a few times. I just don't want anybody to be confused about what you're talking about.
Right, I mean, I think when you talk about diversity, one of the things you're talking, you can be talking about lots of things, one of the things people talk about is simply, is there diversity? Do you have different people from different communities, whether they're ethnic, racial, gender, et cetera? You're also sometimes talking about, is there enough diverse experience out there, right? So, do students actually have experiences with other cultures and other languages? And, which I think we actually do a really good job at here in Brookline. So, that's another kind of diversity, you know? And then you can get into the diversity of the curriculum. You know, we had some presentations by parents in the district concerned about how history was represented in the textbooks, and sometimes that gets lumped into a diversity conversation. Equity really is about the extent to which folks have equitable access to what is considered high-quality education. At least, that's how I think about it for our district, and that's, that is curriculum, that is high-quality teaching, that is positive experiences that support their educational success. But it may not be that we have more celebrations of cultural groups, for example. That may be more of a diversity effort, where you say, we want to make sure there's more diversification of celebrations of different cultures. Equity, for me, in this context, with accountability, has much more to do with fulfilling our promise around all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, where they live, and what their needs are, get equitable access to high-quality services in the district. And the data, we do use the data to talk about that. I think it's been one of the, as a data nerd, one of the things I most enjoy, is that we actually sit here and Jennifer presents all that data to us in great detail. So, but I do think it's important to be mindful of how those things get connected, and how we really hold ourselves accountable to an equity standard, not a diversity standard, because I think those are separate things, so.
That's a really great point, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say that we two things? Okay.
That was so much more than two.
I did.
I did, no, I appreciate it, right? I think there are conversations that we have, but it, sometimes people tune in in season seven, they weren't paying attention in seasons one through six, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear when we said those were two different things. I mean, just a couple other, one...
I was just going to clarify, so when I was thinking about the Human Relations Department, I was actually thinking more in terms of the accountability than I was in terms of diversity. One of the things that I've been frustrated with, actually, in the creation of that department, was that they don't have any data capacity. They don't, in fact, have any capacity to track what's going on. It just is sort of a placeholder, a place where complaints can be lodged, or things like that. And so, my feeling was that as we are doing a much broader, I think, approach, and we look at equity in all of those ways, that is completely appropriate, and we have the accountability piece attached to it, which for me is a really important part of it, that that be sort of a way of introducing some dialogue about that, so anyway.
The only other thing, I would add two things. First of all, I'm excited that these roles right-size the organization, to echo Dr. Jackson, and seventeen direct reports, sixteen direct reports is, I think we can all agree, too many. As we think about the types of demands we make on Dr. Fisher-Mueller, and our other senior staff, and Superintendent, you know, that's just not reasonable. So, I think we can all just agree on that without having to do a lot more. I'm cognizant that there are Chiefs of Staff and Directors of Communications. Not only do we not have a Chief of Staff, there's this weird idea out there, no matter how hard we try to shake it, that we have a Director, a PR Director. We do not, we never have. We...
Isn't that blindingly obvious?
For a while, we had a Director of Community Engagement, who was, I believe, a contractor for six to nine months, or something. Employee, for six to nine months.
Wasn't that long.
Wasn't that long? And suffered because of budget cuts. And her role was not a PR Director, she was supposed to engage the community, to hear what people were saying, and to bubble up priorities, and to make sure people were aware of all the different moving parts. And so, I understand why people have a Director of Communications, I think that, and I understand, by the way, I think you mentioned this, I'm not sure, you know, somebody that all the principals report to. Right? Some intermediary between the Superintendent and the principals that they all report to. It's, they have it at Newton, they have it in other places, but I don't think that there's any appetite on this school committee, nor with you, to sort of add layers of administration for the sake of it, right? So, we're not adding a Chief of Staff, we're not adding a Director of Communications, we're not adding a layer between you and the principals. What we're doing is adding, as you said, I just want to say it again, because I think it's really important, what we're doing is we're adding two really important positions that will improve education for students, right? We are not adding layers of administration, we are adding two positions that will improve the kinds of questions that we, the answers to the questions we're asking, then the demands we're making on staff, which directly relate to the education of our students. It relates to equity, it relates to accountability, it relates to research and communication research, there's all these, you know, all the pieces in there about making sure that we're aligned to our vision and our strategic plan. It's about making sure that we have appropriate levels of supervision of the curricular improvements that we're asking our staff to make. And so, I just, I think that's really exciting, and I'm grateful for it. So, these are terrific.
Thanks.
Ms. Cottrell?
One of the things that these changes will do is free up the time of the Superintendent and the Deputy Superintendent to be able to spend more time in the schools. And that has been one of our goals, because as we talk about data, I have to give you my old-fashioned idea that a lot of data is collected by watching and observing. It's a different kind of data, it's a much more qualitative kind of data. But walking around the school enables you to get a sense of what the feelings are there, how people are interacting with one another. And I think that it is very, very important that people in charge get out into the buildings in the same way that if I'm a teacher in my classroom, I darn well just not better be watching test scores on the tests I give, but also watching interactions, watching engagement, doing things that don't necessarily show up on a quantitative test. And this will give the administration time to do that, which I think they haven't had time to do because of the enrollment growth and the complexity of what's going on in Brookline. So, this will free them up to collect a different kind of data that also, I think, has value.
Okay. Anything else on this?
All right, so that was the Superintendent's Report and the FY16 budget update, which brings us exactly on time, Dr. Lupini, because we had a conversation, you did not keep us thirty minutes out of schedule. Okay, so, at this point, we have a proposed vote on the FY16 budget. I'm not sure if anyone wants to make a couple comments on this, I can certainly make a couple of comments. I don't know if Ben or Peter want to say anything, or Bill. And then we have a series of votes to take, which obviously is, this year, we need to take a no override vote and an override vote. So, Peter, are you gonna, do you have slides, or what do you?
Just in case there are questions, yeah.
Terrific, oh, in case there are questions?
Yeah, I'm not going to.
Okay, so why don't I move it, and then we can answer questions, which is how you're actually supposed to do things? Okay, so do I have to move three budgets here, or, sorry, three votes, or two votes? How many votes do you want?
Probably three votes.
I think it's three also, okay. So, let me move the first one, which may or may not have any discussion. So, in your packets, you all have something called Number Seven, School Committee Actions, okay? Are you on that document? So, the first vote, and it's on flipover, it's at the top of page four, I guess. So, let me move this, Robin, okay. So, the Superintendent, so I move that approval to continue the combined Town School Information Technology Department as outlined by the memorandum of agreement between the Superintendent and the Town Administrator, and as established in the Town Bylaw passed at the special town meeting in November 2004. This basically says we're going to keep going with what we have in terms of working with the town on IT. So, I've moved it, is there a second? Mr. Pollak has seconded it. Is there any discussion? This one's more of a formality than anything. Okay. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you, and thank you, David, for seconding it. All right, so now we have to vote two budgets. We vote a no override budget, which we're calling a base budget, and then we will vote a budget that will go into effect if the override is successful. So, FY16, so first one, FY16 base budget, and there are four things, so just stay with me. The Superintendent of Schools, so I move, I guess, that we approve the specific actions listed in Attachment A, which is available, or will be available online, representing three million nine hundred and four thousand eight hundred and four dollars of net growth for FY16, including five million sixty-four thousand two... $3,904,804 of net growth for FY16, including $5,64,207 of increased expenditures, and $1,159,403 of proposed reductions. Superintendent, we, all second, we're approving the fiscal year 16 general fund.
Do each one by itself?
We have to do each one by itself? So, I said three.
Each one of the items under base budget needs to be done individually? Or can they be acted on as a group? They can be acted on as a group?
As a group?
Yeah, just four.
Four item, four pieces of it.
Same, yeah.
Four pieces of it, and Ms. Charlofsky, if you'd like to amend one, you can move to amend it. Or move to, you can actually move to separate, if you'd like, if you're particularly facile with Robert's Rules of Order. Okay, well, that's fine. So, as allocated for Attachment B-B, I wrote over it, B-B to be supplemented by $3,266,613, which is comprised of tuition revenue, facility rental fees, one-time revenue, and circuit breaker, and revolving fund reimbursement, for a total operating budget of $94,038,993. Number three, we would approve a three-and-a-half percent increase to the Brookline Early Education Program tuition fee, consistent with the rate chart in Attachment C. And number four, the, we would approve an increase to the staff materials fee to $2,642 for FY16, which is Attachment D. So, let me move it. Anybody want to second it? Anyone? Mr. Pollak, thank you. Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment on this.
Yeah, thank you.
So, the comment I would make is that, you'll recall our initial budget presentation, where we essentially said we need, we needed to generate in this model, Peter, I forget what the exact number was, but some additional revenues from, from fees. What we've done for now is put all of that, I believe, into facilities, right, Mr. Rowe?
Well, into, yes.
It's all into facilities. That does not mean when we get to, when we get beyond May 5th, that that's where we would necessarily land. We haven't spent as much time on this as I want to yet. We want to go back and take a look at all of those fee categories that we talked about. And if, if indeed this is the budget that we need to implement, we would need to look at early education. We would need to look at athletics. We would need to look at our other fees, and decide whether this is indeed the right combination that gets us to that number. So, for now, yes. Just understand that we may need to come back on, on that particular piece of the structure at some point, if indeed we actually have to implement this.
So, in other words, we're approving a three-and-a-half percent increase to the early education tuition, but you're telling us that if this, in fact, goes into effect, that that might need to be higher, because we need to go across different categories.
It might. There are three or four categories that we would need to look at and figure out whether this is actually the right approach.
And we would revote it, then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I just, so.
So, I'm just, I just want to clarify. So, the $525,000 in facility rental fees, is that where you said you're sort of embedding the bucket that might then get?
Yeah. Right. So, if you look at number two, at the bottom, it's 225. That's where the $300,000 is.
And just so I can clarify, in anticipation of Ms. Charlofsky's question, watch this, I'm gonna try. There are some of these that are more difficult to do than others. There are some of these that are more difficult to do later than others. There are some of these that, because of the revolving account nature of them, are more difficult to apply to the operating budget than others, and that's why we need to take all of those elements into account. How'd I do?
Almost good.
Oh, good, thanks.
Almost good.
Helen, do you want to say something?
I guess, I would really have a problem, and I know it's premature, and we're not doing it, raising fees at this point, when parents are expecting this amount of money to be paid for next year, and to think about, if I understood you correctly, raising it even before?
Right, I don't disagree with that. I can make the same argument about athletics, and, because you've heard how I feel about athletic fees, even.
But that's a bit more option.
So, let me, let me do this. So, let me do this. Let me do this. Right now, of course, sorry.
Can I just finish? Because I'm looking at the cost right now for a typical parent, and a typical working parent would be close to $20,000 a year. And, it's more than 20,000, actually, it's 21,000. And that is a huge amount of money. And the parents who usually need the full day don't have that kind of money.
Don't disagree at all.
I think that, you know, we really need to be careful, and sometimes those are the kids who we need most in our programs.
Don't disagree at all, it's not, it's not, and you know I don't. If you look at the budget, the other budget that we've put forward, and the amounts of money that we've put into scholarships, and those kinds of things, you know I agree with everything that you just said. And, and so hopefully, we won't have to have the conversation that we're just having right now.
That's what I'm hoping.
Well, I just want to emphasize a couple other things. This is the base budget scenario, and under the base budget scenario, there is not an additional $100,000 for BEEP scholarships. So, in a sense, Helen, well, what you're saying, I mean, what, what we're saying is that right now, we're going to vote today, a three-and-a-half percent increase. A future conversation about, if we re-voted this, and if, if this were to come to pass, it would mean that not only would we be increasing it past the three-and-a-half percent, but we would be doing so in a scenario where we are not making a dent in the unfunded scholarship money that we have right now. So, right now, we have $250,000 of requests for scholarships, that we are not meeting. The override budget funds 100,000 of that 250. Here, not only are we not funding the 100,000 of the 250, we're actually going to make the 250 worse, if we go even higher. Right? So, it would be a double whammy, so I think.
And don't we sign contracts with parents about this?
We do at some point. Again, again, we'd have to, we'd have to go back and revisit.
I mean, I don't want to belabor a point, but I really think it's the wrong thing to do. And it's not just because it's early childhood.
Well, no, that's fine, but again, the $300,000 is going to have to come from somewhere. And there, if this override fails, there are all sorts of unpleasant things that are going to happen, and this will be on the list. So, so it's, the $300,000 of revenue's got to come from somewhere.
I was just going to say that these are the rates that the Early Childhood Program has already advertised, and put into their proposals with parents. This will not be a change from what's been presented to them.
From this, the three and a half.
The three and a half is not.
But they're talking about more.
To try to go, to try to go above that.
Oh, if you try to, I'm sorry, yeah. It's what's here is what's presented to them already.
Right. Well, once again, we're, the money has to come from somewhere, so, not to be the glass of cold water. Ms. Stone? Is there something else that you would like to not argue within this?
No, I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just looking for information. So, I know, so I know that the, I know that this is a padded number, the 525,000 in facility rental fees. Can, Mr. Rowe, do you know what our expectations are for the current fiscal year? I know we are already charging.
Yes, $75,000.
$75,000? And assuming that we would have a target somewhat lower than that, that, that facility rental would not be absorbing all of that, I mean, there's a, that's a big difference between $75,000 and 525,000.
Yeah, but the 75 is a little misleading, in that the 75 only included half a year implementation on some of it. So, it's a little misleading, but your, your point is still correct.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, even with the anticipation that we would find other fees that would draw down that expectation, is this a realistic number to expect that we could actually achieve from facility rental?
Well, we think it's realistic if, if we're willing to challenge assumptions around rental, around the way we give space to in-town groups. We think it's realistic if we increase the amount that we're charging those traditional partners, even above this first-year fee. Then, then it begins to become realistic, but there are, there are pains to that.
Understood, understood. I just, I was just questioning the overall number, and whether or not, when you're doing budgeting out, and you're saying, "Oh, we're going to hit this target." I'm just, just asking the question, because that's, because that is, that's a very heavy lift, and it's asking a lot of our partners.
It is.
Right, and so just to underscore that, our, this year, it's $75,000. Next year, the full year implementation would be 150. Even if an override is successful, that number goes up by 75,000 through other mechanisms to 225. And this is a 300,000 on top of that, just so everybody understands those steps. Yeah, no, there's going to be a lot of not pretty things that happen. Okay, so, is there any further discussion? All right, so it's been moved, seconded, no further discussion. Can we vote? All those in favor of this budget? This is the base budget, the first four items. Please signify. Okay, it's unanimous. All right, let's take the last budget vote, which is the happier budget, the budget voting with override funds. So, number one, approving the specific actions listed in Attachment A, representing $9,122,804 of net growth for FY16. Approving the FY16 general fund appropriation of $96,290,380 is allocated per Attachment BO, to be supplemented by two, roughly $3 million, for a total operating budget of $99,256,993. Number three, the superintendent of schools requests approval of a three-and-a-half percent increase to the Brookline Early Education Program tuition fees, consistent with the rate chart attached, Attachment C. And finally, approving an increase to the staff materials fee of 2,000, to $2,642 for FY16. So, what, the only things, so the three-and-a-half percent BEEP is the same for now, the materials fee increase is the same, and what's different is some of the, the revenue numbers, from the override and from facilities, basically. Okay, moved, seconded? Mr. Pollak? Okay. Any discussion?
One more question.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the one-time revenue fund numbers, where does that leave us? Which, which one-time revenues are we talking about, and where does that leave us in terms of our, I mean, we've been trying to draw down our use of one-time funds, and where does that leave us?
The basic element is that we start with 800,000, we budget three, and then, and then we budget two.
I think it was two, I've seen two, 200, 100 is what we had talked about.
Yeah, so we use the 800,000 over three years.
Over three years?
Yes.
Okay, this is 300, almost 360, right?
Yeah, you have something more specific than what?
No, that wasn't.
So, it is still, it is still our plan to draw down those one-time funds, so that they're gone after three years?
It is.
Well, and should, well, well, and should that plan, as it has in a number of years, as we showed the advisory committee on Monday night, result in surpluses, then it will not.
Right. The plan, let me give you a longer answer, which is, the, the three-year plan, if the override is successful, is not dependent on one-time revenue. We're trying to work that out of the system, so we wouldn't be dependent on it. It's served for, for many years as a contingency for high-cost special needs students.
Right.
And we essentially return to a situation where it serves as, in that capacity, because it's funded in one year, it's funded based on expenditures in year one, drives the revenue in year two. So, we always have a sense of how it's going to be structured, so we've used it essentially as a contingency. So, you would have put it back to its original intent, more as a contingency than as funding in a given year, which is how we do it.
The first description sounded like we were simply spending it into, not, the point where it didn't exist.
No.
But we're in fact spending down our reliance on it, so that we have that back as the buffer that it's supposed to be.
It's also an interesting conver, go ahead.
I was just going to say, because the, both the timing and the actual revenue has varied, and almost in our, in our history, every year, the revenue's usually different from what we budget and plan on. We've been able to build up a cushion, and so that, as I said before, that serves as a contingency. We want to get ourselves in a mode where that's essentially a contingency, as we move.
Right, but to, and to this point, you know, I mean, we're working with a chair, terrific person, chair of the Education Subcommittee, the advisory committee, who believes that we should have these kinds of funds, these kinds of reserves going forward, does not believe they should be spent. So, that's a conversation for us to have as we develop 17 and 18 and beyond, as to where we all stand, and probably have that conversation with them.
So, Mr. Rowe, am I right in sort of basically understanding that there's a $5 million difference between these two budgets?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, okay. Just as a headline for people to keep in their head. I mean, what's striking to me is some of the things that you have to get out to get to that 5 million, which is you're taking out five elementary teachers to get to these, you know, consolidations, or higher class sizes, you're taking out five high school teachers, you're eliminating the ECS program, which is worth, by 400,000, I guess, delta between the two budgets. We're taking out $400,000 of technology, we're taking out $200,000 of teacher professional development, we're taking out $250,000 of math specialists, we're taking out $100,000 of early ed scholarships, and maybe compounding it, that Helen's going to vote against, by increasing further early ed fees. We're not enhancing things like the Steps to Success Program, the African-American/Latino Scholars Program. I mean, there are a ton of enrollment-related supports, we're not doing, we're not doing assistive technology for students with special needs, we're not doing response to intervention, we're not doing learning community, learning, learning centers.
We're not fully addressing our needs in terms of translation services.
Translation, ELL. I mean, like, the list of things that we are not doing is striking between these two budgets, at least to me, and to those of us who've sat at this table. And I know some people, it's a little bit abstract, like $5 million, but what are you actually doing with it? Every single line item, down to the $10,000 line item, is listed, if anybody is interested in this attachment, in excruciating detail. So, if anybody wants to know what's happening with the money, it's here. Thank you for providing that in a side-by-side format, allowing us to do the two-finger approach of override, no-override analysis. Anything else? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, and there's no more discussion. All those in favor of the budget with override funds, assuming override funds, please raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Mr. Rowe.
We are actually on time. And it is time for the Enrichment and Challenge Support Program presentation. We are so excited to hear this. After we've just voted this depressing budget, it is so exciting to hear what might happen after all of the hard work that's gone into this, parents, community members, professionals, outside researchers, third-party best practices, led by Dr. Fisher-Mueller, and the superintendent, I mean, it's just, Amy, of course, it's just exciting to, to see the culmination of all this, so.
I've actually said, as Dr. Fisher-Mueller prepares here, that, that I actually believe this is one of the more, you, you just did a comparison of some of the differences. I think this is one of the more stark differences that really talks about where the priorities of, of this school system, where this administration, where this school committee are between, when you, when you look at these two budgets, that what you're about to hear is really a vision for enrichment and challenge support, and a vision for, for what this kind of program can do to support us in, in driving this kind of change for all students in all classrooms. And it really speaks, I think, to, to our values, that it is part of that, that overall spending plan, and to your values, in that you gave us this charge when we were back here having a very different conversation two years ago. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fisher-Mueller to walk you through this very exciting presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I would like to do for you tonight is to summarize the committee's recommendations, and then share with you how, our initial work of moving on these recommendations, and what our next steps are. Very quickly, some quick background. So, some form of ECS, Enrichment and Challenge Support, has been in Brookline for over 35 years, and it went through the very first phase of a new program review process back in 2004. And the review of the current research at that time, and the program's design, and the feedback from stakeholders, had the recommendations for that review come out around consultation, differentiated instruction, critical and creative thinking, and to bring some more standardization and consistency to the program. Then, as Dr. Lupini has described, the program went through a difficult time of being put up for a cut, and then reinstated with a charge to the Program Review Committee. So, this committee here, what you see is representation across all of our stakeholder groups, which is really important to us in every Program Review Committee, and especially important, in this case, for this work. So, that committee reconvened after the reinstatement of this program and the budget, and they were given a new charge, all right? They were charged to rethink this program. And we talked to the committee about looking at this, this program as opportunities to personalize learning for students, and to provide opportunities for meaningful, meaningful learning and challenge, and broaden the scope of the program. We presented to them the goals of Strategic Plan 2.0, and asked them to think about those We presented to them the goals of Strategic Plan 2.0 and asked them to think about those goals and how this program could actually drive our strategic plan goals in terms of students becoming invested in their learning and pursuing their passions, along with acquiring skills of effective learners and technology and those areas. So you are familiar with these four goals. And it was very important to us that we saw the relationship between this committee's work and these goals and how to really make this work happen for all students. With the charge, with the strategic plan goals and the knowledge of the current literature in this program, in this area, the committee focused on these different areas of investigation. For sure, they looked at the stakeholder data that we had and a review of the current program is provided by the coordinator, Miss Boot. They also investigated what was available for other programs within the state of which there are very few. And attention to the current literature, they looked deeply at the potential of project-based learning as a strategy for challenging and offering meaningful learning for students at higher levels, as well as what you see here in terms of the 21st century skills and beyond differentiation, looking at personalization and individualization, which are quite different. They were given the charge to look at technology as a learning tool and what those opportunities might be, as well as out-of-school options and then the idea of broadening our resources and really accessing the community. And I skipped this one here because this is a real important area, the idea of the tiered models for the program, which has become a foundation of the recommendations. I'm hesitating because that's not showing up on that. Neither is that. Okay. So with their, with their research and their investigation, the committee landed on these four fundamentals, that whatever they were to create, they needed this program to be classroom-centered, curriculum-based, collaborative, and to create partnerships. So what's meant by classroom-centered is that the challenge that needs to be embedded for students needs to be sort of the business of the classroom and the way of the learning, not considered a special activity. Curriculum-based relating to that has to be that the curriculum has to be designed with students, these students in mind in how to design and offer challenge as it's shared with teachers. It must be collaborative. It must take advantage of the resources that we have within the system in all of these different areas that can then be brought to bear to support students who have mastered the grade level learning objectives. And then the idea of building these partnerships, again, of really maximizing the opportunities that we have. And so their recommendations are built upon this foundation and the tiered model of instruction is the defined structure that I will share with you. So this triangle may be familiar to many of you. It's Response to Intervention, RTI. It's most commonly spoken of in terms of struggling students and what are the strategies that we need to take to support their learning. What the committee did is looked at this tiered instructional model and thinking about the students who needed to be challenged and who needed, who weren't showing the evidence of meaningful learning. So Tier One is about what happens in the classroom. It's about those best practices being applied on a regular basis. And as you see here, Tier Two is specialized. It's moving outside of the classroom. And then Tier Three is individualized. It's much more intensive, and in this case, it means acceleration. What this model has then provided us in the system is a full continuum of instruction for all learners. So as I mentioned earlier, the triangle that you're used to seeing is for struggling students, and that is when you move from Tier One here, the classroom, Tier Two for specialized interventions, Tier Three for individualized interventions. That is the area that's more familiar with you. So now that we have, as a result of this committee's work, excuse me, is what is the instruction that we need to support students who are in need of challenge and acceleration? And this, this model here, this continuum, is based on this bottom here, the foundation. It is about student learning data, and it's about how do you design this meaningful learning? You need to know your students well. The curriculum, that goes back to those areas, the foundational areas, the curriculum has to be designed with challenge in mind and an understanding of what are these habits and skills that we want students to learn. You have to design the assessments so you can see evidence of that learning and then develop the instruction with the resources that are necessary. So in Tier One, again, think about the regular classroom practices. What we have to do is we have to more intentionally embed challenge into the curriculum as we hand that curriculum over and we work with teachers. We have a number of extensions and resources, but what we have learned is that those extensions are not always seen as easily accessible to teachers. And so we have to make them more accessible, make them more user-friendly. In the classroom, we have to do a better job of collaborating with the specialists that we have, technology specialists, math, and literacy. And what we have to do is to identify the assessments that are necessary to show evidence of student learning and then monitor that learning over time. What's real important in Tier One is the role of the ECS resource teacher. The idea here is that these folks know students well as they have moved through our K8 system. These folks help our teachers act proactively to plan ahead, how to embed challenge in the classroom, in the curriculum. They help to identify these resources and strategies, and they coach on the design of learning and the co-planning. I mentioned quickly there earlier, problem and project-based learning. So it's not that this particular type of instruction is to be a model across all of our classrooms all of the time. What project-based learning is about is how do you actually bring that relevance, bring that rigor, bring that real-life experience to the classroom and into the curriculum in a way that you identify these strong elements of instruction, like student choice, like how do you embed that rigor and relevance, like authentic audiences? Who are the students showing the evidence of their learning? Who are they showing that to? And is that work meaningful? And so what's different here is this idea of coaching on that design versus the earlier model of just consultation. And then the ECS resource teachers support the implementation and then again, the idea of monitoring student learning over time. Tier Two is more specialized. The idea here is that when a teacher does not see evidence of meaningful learning, then it means that the student needs something, needs something different, needs something more. And that's about identifying what are these specialized interventions. And what you see here is the use of child study team. So that's a structure that we have in place, again, utilized most often with our struggling learners. But with these recommendations, what we are saying is that continuum of instruction for all learners now means that our child study teams are a resource to support teachers as they wrestle with thoughts, you know, different ideas about instruction for all learners. So Tier Two then is when the teacher is not seeing that meaningful learning, the teacher then brings that child's profile to the child study team, a group of colleagues, a group of educators, and they talk about what are some possible strategies based on that student's profile that they believe then can actually create the kind of learning that we are hoping to see. Ideas are more personalized project-based learning. The idea of helping students to identify their areas of interest, their areas of passion, and how they may be able to go deeper. Independent studies and resources, research, and then also extending beyond the classroom. And here again, the idea of accessing technology. You'll see this repeated over and over, the idea of monitoring that progress and documenting meaningful learning. The ECS teacher works closely with the classroom teacher within Tier Two. As the student may actually be doing some learning outside of the classroom, what's important is the classroom teacher is still, if you will, owning the learning of that child. It's not that that student's learning then is transferred over to the ECS teacher. When we don't see the meaningful learning that we would expect from a student, even with the specialized interventions of Tier Two, then the teacher may go back to the child study team and outline those areas in need of further challenge. It may be that the child study team with the teacher recommends more individualized intervention. And currently, within our program, that's about acceleration. Now, a major difference here, which is a real strength of their recommendations, is the idea that content challenge is owned by the content area. Math challenge, which is our greatest area in ECS, is owned by math. So when we're talking about a student who is in need of this level of individualized intervention, the math coordinator would be the one who would be working, working with the math specialist, be working with the ECS resource teacher to identify what's best for that child. And then when we're talking about the great acceleration, that is a responsibility and a process that would remain with the ECS coordinator. Touch more on child study teams. The idea here is that child study teams are collaborative problem-solving models. Child study teams are these group of educators that are a resource to teachers when they are not seeing the learning that they would expect. And so a teacher comes to this group and they outline all of the interventions that they have tried, interventions, challenges, whatever that may be, and what the student's response was to each of those different options. Again, very data-driven. And then what this child study team does with the teacher, with the ECS resource specialist, with the, it may be the math specialist, the literacy specialist, they review that data and they propose an action plan. That action plan goes back to the teacher, back to the classroom in some cases, or it's in that Tier Two, which is just outside of the classroom. The idea being that the action plan is followed, data is gathered, people continue to ask the question of, is the child showing evidence of meaningful learning with this intervention, with this added challenge? So with this, with these recommendations, what we are doing is proposing the expansion of our child study teams. So that's just an overview of the tiered model, the tiered instruction, which is really, I believe, the cornerstone of this set of recommendations. But beyond that tiered instruction, the committee is saying that we need to build stronger partnerships, both partnerships within the school, meaning families and parents, but also outside of the school. How are we, again, accessing those opportunities? And looking beyond just Brookline, just Boston, all right? What is it, how is it that technology can help us? So in summary, what we're talking about are recommendations that are about being curriculum-based, challenge being built into the curriculum, being proactive, using project-based learning and the elements of project-based learning in the planning of that instruction. Their recommendations are very strong around professional development, ongoing learning. So the professional development that's necessary is professional development for our child study team members in terms of what, what is the profile, what are the characteristics of high-level learners, what are those needs, and what are the common strategies for supporting their needs? Professional development is also with the ECS research teachers around project-based learning. The professional development is with our math specialist in terms of, and I say math specialist, it would be any specialist, but it's primarily math, in terms of how, what their role is and how they can support higher-level learners. And then the tiered instruction that I talked about. What's important about this tiered instructional model that is different for our ECS program is that it brings a very clear process that's articulated and that's understood and has a structure to support it. So it's something that we can both, we can plan for, we can see, we can watch, we can measure, we can question and change, and it would bring greater consistency across the system. As well with this tiered instructional model, what we do is we are very deliberate around the collaboration and accessing the expertise of the different educators that we have in the system. And once again, I know I'm repeating myself, but it's that important. What we are doing with these recommendations are we are seeking to identify the assessments that are necessary so that we can actually use data of student learning on a regular basis, because you can't, you can't know what to do next unless you know exactly where the child is in that learning. So it's very student-learning, data-driven. All of this being coordinated and managed by our ECS staff. So like other program review processes, we don't wait for the formal, okay, now we are in Phase Two or Phase Three. When we see that there's work that needs to happen and we have resources available, we go ahead and get started, and so we have. The obvious one is the budget preparation that you just approved. Thank you very much. What's embedded within there is to increase the capacity of our ECS resource teachers across our schools. Also, it's to add math specialists. And it's not special math specialists that are now for ECS, you know, students who need that support. It's that math specialists, as well with our literacy specialists, we are all about all kids, okay? And so what we have to do is we have to increase their capacity by building those FTEs. And also, you see there parenthetically, we need to also support our middle school grades, six, seven, and eight. That's been true both with intervention and it is also true with challenge. The budget puts forth a 1.0 coordinator, currently .6, so it's an additional .4, as well as the CSTs that I mentioned, and the very, very valuable professional development. So to pull that professional development out a little bit and let you know what's happening right now that's so critical, is that Alan November's name has been used a number of times tonight. The work that Alan is doing with us is directly related to this model and these recommendations. What Alan November's work is around is how do you redesign the curriculum, redesign the lesson plan such that you actually maximize the potential of the technology, and he uses this language, in order to transform the learning? So he has these six questions that he uses. People bring, they bring their units and their lessons, and then it's a bit of a protocol, if you will, that you actually work through each of Alan's questions. And those questions are things like, they question the depth of inquiry, the depth of critical thinking, they question the relevancy, does this work matter? Does it matter to the student? It questions, is this, is this best-in-the-world work? And what he means by that is, with the Internet, you can actually access examples of great work, right? And so when you give kids the opportunity to see what the answer, like a project, what that could look like, they get that in their mind and then they can go even further. They can go even further. Sometimes people talk about when you show kids examples, it stops them, it lowers the bar? No. With kids who are looking for challenge, with kids who are looking, you know, above and beyond, what it does is they say, oh yeah, you can do it that way? Well, you can do it that way, too. And so Alan's work, again, is having direct impact immediately. The Buck Institute, one of the organizations that is very well-known for their high-quality work on project-based learning, has come to Brookline. And instructional coaching is very important for our ECS resource teachers. Again, it's not consultation, it's coaching. It's about how do we help teachers to design learning? You see there, BEF, BEF, BEF. The Brookline Education Foundation has been a major partner in this professional development, and I want to be sure to acknowledge their work. There is professional development around technology. This is the element of how does, how does the technology actually serve, again, the lesson design? What are some of the apps that might be able to be accessed to offer different challenge to students? And then the professional development around the characteristics and needs of advanced learners. Again, primarily there, we're talking about CST members, but also certainly classroom teachers. So this is all work that came out of this committee's set of recommendations that we were able to move on this year. So when we do all this, when we apply these recommendations, when we get the funding that we've, that we've asked for, what are you going to see? So what you're going to see is you will see evidence, well, we will see, evidence in the curriculum of these areas for greater depth, more rigor, more relevance to students. Project-based learning, the idea of how are we actually giving students choice? What are the driving questions that we are using? And these driving questions can then provide access to that curriculum for students at all different levels. all different levels. When we do this right, you will see evidence of the partnerships that we have built, and these partnerships with colleges, universities, organizations, locally, globally. We will have the opportunity, actually, to get our kids connected to great work that's going on beyond our schools. You're going to see out-of-school time and extensions and enrichment offerings. Currently, we do not have organized work and organized activities around, and the name's escaping me right now, Odyssey of the Mind, yes. As well, right now, we are not accessing the support that parents are offering, right? We are not welcoming the parent involvement in terms of extensions and out-of-school time. And with an additional .4, that's something that the coordination, the ECS coordinator can actually manage now. And we will see evidence of those assessments that I spoke of, that we're going to be able to actually see the idea of meaningful learning, of students actually showing growth. The reason I keep emphasizing that is, we talk about challenge, and challenge is important, but it has to be challenged for a purpose, all right? It's a purpose for learning. It's not just a challenge in terms of an activity and, you know, it could be enjoyable, it could be fun, but how does that actually move that child and the learning? I'll show you an example in a minute, I believe, of surveys where we will see evidence, if we do this right, in our surveys and the questions that we are asking. And we're going to be able to actually point to different projects that have been designed. And it's not that we're going to have these individual projects across these multiple grade levels at each and every school. What it's about is as we build these projects, what we can do is come together and share those, and it can then develop as a system-wide third-grade project, for example. So we will be able to point to a number of these. Supervision evaluation will play an important role in how we advance this model, and later as a next step, you'll hear a little bit more about that. So what does success look like? I point to this over and over again because we are driven by our strategic plan. And our strategic plan is in development in terms of the identification of specific goals that attach to these visionary goals here, and those goals will have metrics with action plans. And those metrics will be what we'll be able to point to when we say that these are the outcomes that we are seeking. So for example, we did a survey and there is a question here that asks about a student's level of interest in school at 81%. If we do this right, we would like to see that percentage going up. My child likes going to school, 88%, all right? That's a strong percentage, but we want to see that go up. One member of the parent group presented these initial recommendations, the parent talked about wanting to see her child come home with that glow, that excitement about what they did in school, in talking about that particular, that project, that activity. And when students come home and tell stories like that, then parents will be responding at higher rates on questions like this student engagement. So we are asked often about how will we measure this, what will it look like? So we're not making this stuff up, okay? This is highly researched work in terms of the idea of matching challenge with ability. So Mihaly Csikszentmihalyi, he is the individual who defined flow, which is that sweet spot, if you will, that matches a high level of challenge with a high level of ability. So while happy and confident, right, you see that in the control area, well, that's nice and we want that, okay? What we know is that if we actually are able to build the challenge even more, that it can actually provide kids an opportunity to really get into a space where their learning can go to a depth and a degree that is beyond what they may be experiencing right now. And I actually did have a parent who spoke of the challenge as offered in the classroom as relaxed math, right? Now, it was an interesting use of the word, and here you see in Csikszentmihalyi's work, relaxation, that lower right-hand grid there. So it's a high ability with low challenge. So we want to be up in that upper right-hand quadrant. As well, the work of Ken Robinson talks about students, not students specifically, but people in their element. And the element is, again, that upper right-hand quadrant, when you're able to match a person's passion, what they love doing, with something that they're really good at. And what we believe is that as we grow this model, as we build in these different structures, processes, resources, we will have the opportunity to work with students in a way that we can help to identify what's being defined here as the element. And we would hope then to be able to see evidence of this in the surveys and the questions that we ask parents and staff. One of these questions here, it says, my child is challenged to meet high expectations at this school, that's 69%, all right? We would certainly want to see that percentage go up. Another thing that we'll see if we do this right is we will take care of another gap that we have, all right? We talk often about the achievement gap in terms of getting students too proficient. The other gap that we have is around students who are proficient and students who are advanced. And that, if you look at it demographically, defines some consistent patterns, some persistent patterns that we want to break. So as you have seen, we have advanced in our percentage of students scoring advanced, but we want that to go even higher. I'm going to go ahead and move through this. So with all of these recommendations, with the budget that we've put forward to you, with the work that we have done so far, where are we and where are our next steps? What we're doing right now is we are actually really unpacking these recommendations to ask ourselves, what does this really look like? What will these expectations be across these different roles? We need to share that work and develop that work with principals and with staff. We need to meet with the CST leaders across the schools and help them to understand this work. We need to look at this model, look at the work we are doing, ask ourselves, where are we unintentionally actually putting up maybe barriers, or we are blind to areas where we are not including students who otherwise ought to be included, all right? This is, Dr. Jackson, I really appreciated your definition of equity, all right? We need to make opportunities available. We need to actually take steps to identify what might be invisible to us right now on where students actually need to be challenged further. And I have to say just very quickly, oftentimes, students who are not challenged, one of their expressions of that is through behavior and misbehavior, all right? So through this professional development, as we get educators well-aware of what some of these signals might be, might we be able to identify students who aren't misbehaving because they're not challenged or they don't understand or around other difficulties that may be present? But is it because they're not fully engaged, they're not challenged, they're bored, they are acting out because of that? That's just an example of places where we have to identify strategies, actions we can take to address this issue of equity and bring this opportunity to all students. We have professional development plans that we need to just finalize and be sure that we get those out and get educators involved. And acceleration, that third tier, we believe strongly that we can be more creative about that, that right now, the idea of grade acceleration and subject acceleration comes with its challenges. So there's a question of cost-benefit. So my child will move ahead two grades to take math as a fourth grader and sixth grade. However, to do that on a regular basis, that class meets, and then my student misses fourth-grade science, for example, all right? We don't want to put students in that situation, that they're giving something up in order to gain the challenge that they need. And so we believe we can be more creative about that. As well, we have to talk about increasing CST capacity. It may not be that we just make an additional team in every school. There's a lot of work to do this summer and a lot of work for the next school year. Of course, assessment and data, what does that look like? How are we going to actually move that work forward? And we're working with the curriculum coordinators as they work with teachers in the development of curriculum, not only in the redesign, as we talked earlier about with the work with Alan November, but also the idea that we want to embed in our curriculum in a proactive way, challenges and extensions that are available and easily accessible to teachers. And we want to spend time real quickly in initiating partnerships that are right there that we're aware of, and you'll hear later about some opportunities with technology. As well, when we talk about rigor and relevance, they're actually standards and very, very clear descriptions of what rigor, intellectual rigor, looks like and what relevance looks like. And so what we need to do is to take those documents and, if you will, unpack them and create the ability to look at those and our units and our curriculum and say, to what degree is this particular lesson rigorous as defined by, if you will, William Daggett and his work? So, we have a model. We have a set of recommendations that give us a structure, a set of processes. We have people in roles that we can define and be clear. We have an awful lot of excitement about this, a lot of energy. We have the resources to move this work forward. And so I just want to be sure to thank and express my gratitude to all the members of the committee. We have staff here right now, if I may, Tanya Gregoire, Carolyn Miller, Miss Boot, Sue Poligian, Scott Moore, Amy Martin, yes? And parents on the parent advisory committee as well, Mark Jones and Lydia, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name.
Shire.
Shire, thank you. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments from the committee? We've talked about this a couple times in subcommittees, so I don't know if there are any particular observations that people want to elivate for this conversation. Barbara.
Ms. Cotto? What I would like to thank the committee for doing is really making very clear that this is a way of looking at all students. This is not a program for those separate few who stand out in certain ways, but a program where you look at each child to see where that child needs, or if that child needs enrichment. I think that that's part of the challenge of getting this program accepted, because so many people think, the minute you say gifted and talented or enrichment and challenge, they think, oh yeah, they're those smart kids. They're that little group of smart kids. And we don't have the money for just a little group of smart kids. We know that even if we did have the money, that's not the way to look at this program. We need to look at this program much more broadly. We need to look at this program as a way of reaching maybe the sort of disaffected child who isn't excited about school but is very interested in some sort of thing that we, as teachers, can latch on to and really help that child. That's been what teachers have been trying to do over time, but it's hard, given our challenges today. It's certainly hard because we have so many children in the schools, the schedules are very packed. And it has been the ECS resource teachers who have, I think, and the parents who have kept the light of this program alive. So I have to thank the committee for doing this and really praise the work of Dr. Fisher Mueller and Miss Boot in keeping this before us, because it is a program that we have been in danger of losing. And that would not be in the best interests of our students, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Cox?
I will just add my name to all of Ms. Cotto's comments, but also, you talked about how the extension resources haven't been accessible to the classroom teacher, and is that an issue of the topic or the access to materials, the access to technology? Can you just help us understand that a little better?
Yes. So we have a portal, and teachers go to the portal to access all sorts of resources that are available. What teachers are telling us is they click and the resources pop up, and it's just overwhelming, overwhelming. So it needs to be a little bit easier, a little bit clearer about where to go for exactly what, instead of just entering this large mass of resources. And that is a place where the ECS resource teachers can be very, very helpful, that inasmuch as I say math belongs to math, the ECS resource teachers become very facile in working through those resources there within the portal. So as they work with a teacher and the teacher describes a particular, what's needed, they know right where it is, right where to go, they can then guide the teacher as the teacher learns to use those resources.
Which just sort of underscores the importance that we want differentiation in the classroom, but it's going to be very hard for a classroom teacher to manage that without the help of specialists like the ECS staff.
That's right, that's right.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Jennifer. As always, I was at one of the, I think, one of the conversations about this, but I didn't at the time pick up on a couple of things. So although Ms. Cox just asked one question that I had, so I can sort of check that off the list. The idea of meaningful learning strikes me as extraordinarily subjective, and I wonder how we're going to know when we see it.
Yes. So we actually are defining it, meaningful learning means, and it's about a series of bullets that have us understanding that we want students involved in them knowing about themselves as learners, about where they are in need of challenge, where they are in the curriculum, so that there is an understanding of content and skills, that's the basic part. But then the idea of meaningful comes in, does this work have purpose for the student? Is this learning advancing the student? Which is that what we're looking for is, we're looking to describe the difference between enjoyment of a challenging activity engaging, right, versus something that actually advances that child's understanding of the content and of the skills. And we're using the word meaningful to help define that. So it's about identification of what are the goals, what are the learning goals for this student? And then with those goals, is this actually the learning that that child needs to be doing? Is this learning that is meaningful and purposeful for this child?
Does that mean that we are moving towards having specific goals for every child in every class?
Not to that degree. Teachers have goals for every single student as they walk around the room and engage with that child. They know that when they approach the student to conference on a particular piece of writing, they know where that student is in their skill level of that writing, they know what that child needs to do next. What we don't always do very well is to actually get clear and articulate that and document it as well, so that it can be shared with specialists and other educators. But I wouldn't go as far to say that it's about having an individual education plan, a series of goals with objectives to this degree. That's not what we're describing to that extent.
And if I could just push this a little further, so as you were describing, I think you were describing the parents who talked about, you know, wanting their child to come home, it's a dream of every parent, I think, that their child should come home from school. And when you ask that question, how was school today? Their answer is not going to be fine.
You learn nothing.
Fine, where are the chips? So I love that image, but it made me start thinking about this... But so I love that image, but it made me start thinking about, this description is beautiful and it's very classroom-centered and it's very teacher-centered, which I think is completely appropriate because that's what we're talking about. But my question is that as we're, as we are also talking about, how do we recognize the child that needs more of something? That a lot of the time, you may have a child who's really bored and not acting out, who's doing just fine, and yet not particularly engaged, coming home and saying school was fine. And so my question is, where is the, where is the interaction with the parent's experience of that child? In this whole conception of how do we identify the children who need it? How do we identify what they need? So that, where is the parent's role? What happens to the parent who has a child coming home and that child is just fine, but that child is not particularly engaged? And the parent knows the child and knows that there's something that could be happening but doesn't quite know what it is? What does that parent do and where in this does that conversation happen?
I believe that your comments and question relate to part of this foundation that you see under this part here, knowing students well. And I think also you're speaking to the role of the ECS resource teacher who, if you will, follows the student year to year, teacher to teacher, follows the student and the parents through. So I believe, and I, okay, I'm here seeing some head nods. What I feel very strongly about, I underlined the word proactive when I shared that first slide around tier one with you. I believe that teachers don't need to learn about a child that's in their class in September, October, November, that, oh, this child isn't being challenged that way. They don't have to experience that. Teachers can learn ahead of time through the work of ECS resource teachers, through the documentation of student learning over time, through the collaboration of teachers across grade levels and teachers with other specialists, that students can be carried year to year to year without having to learn all over again, and a parent has to advocate again in this grade and again in that grade. I think that's very important. I also think that, again, project-based learning is a place where you can really, you can see a kid light up, that you might not have known to go there, if you will.
Ms. Pollak?
I too will say thank you for this. For me, it's sort of particularly fun because I actually haven't been part of this conversation, so it's kind of all new. And so it's a little intimidating even to, you know, figure out what question to ask.
You can act out, we know how to respond.
That's right.
The, one of the words that keep, has kept coming up in my mind over the last half hour, 45 minutes or whatever, is integration and a kind of amusing or a fantasy that, that an end stage of what you're, you know, and I love this, I love this kind of, you know, push-me-pull-you diagram or, you know, folded out, you know, pyramid or whatever. An end stage of it is that, is that there is no longer enrichment and challenge as a separate concept because the teaching and learning incorporates that. And it's not that you have, it's not that every student has an IEP in either direction, but that the system is sensitive enough to identify the needs to the teacher of every student so that they can be met in a kind of a real-time basis. And you said that a big, one of the things that you kept saying was, do we have to identify the assessments in order to get there? And it struck me that in the era where we're trying to struggle against being overwhelmed by testing, that we don't want to be confusing assessments and testing. And what we really want is to have the assessments embedded in the curriculum, in the teaching and learning, so that the information is emerging about the students, every student, through the process of engaging with the work. And is, are you doing that? Is that where you're going to be, you know, trying to identify the assessments in ways that integrate them with the, you know, with the curriculum? Embed them in the curriculum? Does that make sense?
I appreciate the question because it gives me the opportunity to make it very clear that assessment doesn't mean test.
Yes.
Right? Assessment doesn't mean test. And in fact, Ms. Cotto, you said earlier, a form of data is observation. All right? So if we had a checklist or a rubric that described particular behaviors, let me say it this way. Ms. Martin led work over the past two years around the skills and work habits of effective learners. And with other coordinators and teachers, what they have done is they have described what those skills and habits look like across the grade levels, across all of those skills. So when you take that document and you create it as sort of a checklist, or it's something that the teachers can sort of carry with them as they're, you know, seeking to observe those particular behaviors, they can keep track of that. And that then becomes an assessment of, in this case, effective learner work habits and skills. All right? So if you're looking around, if one of those is inquiry, let's say, all right? How many times does a student ask a question? What types of questions are they asking? Right? Are they, are they basic questions or are they more analytical questions? So I'm trying to come up with examples to show you that when I say student learning data, when I say assessment, what I'm talking about is identifying, what is it we want to see? What do we want to see as evidence of learning, evidence of growth, whether it's around content, skills, aptitudes, whatever that may be? If I can add one other piece to this, a very important point, and I apologize for not saying this earlier, it's very important and recommendations from the committee that we work towards students owning their own learning. And so what's meant by that is not students being responsible, they have to, you know, help themselves. It's about them knowing themselves as learners, knowing themselves in terms of what it is they like, what are they good at, what do they need to do more of? And being ones who can then advocate for themselves, who can communicate with the teacher about how a particular activity unit lesson may be going and what they might need. It's about a student who, when given a particular activity, and that student finishes, let's say, that the student owning their own learning, saying, okay, I am finished, what else can I do now? Instead of this, I'm finished, I'm finished, I'm done, right? All right? That metaphorically, if you will, okay, they finish, they finish. They look at it this way, right? They wonder about it that way. Okay? They engage themselves in inquiry, in reflection about that work, in, you know, being curious and then again communicate with the teacher. Point being to have students actually come to own their own learning, because what we can't do is set it up for the teacher to be the provider all the time around challenge. Challenge me, student, challenge me. In what way am I challenging? What am I bringing to this myself?
So I just want to say a couple of things. I mean, first of all, thank you. This is a tremendous body of work. It's just so exciting to see how the vision has evolved and morphed over time. And one of the things that's interesting to me over watching this conversation for the last number of years is how there are specific action items, but there are also just some really important mindsets that need to change. And I think there is a fair amount of myth busting that has to go on, if you will. So, I mean, there's any number of myths that people, or mindsets that people have. I mean, one is, this is a gifted and talented program. It's not. It's about challenging every child. It's about challenging and figuring out where, you know, sometimes people freak out at this language, but figuring out where kids are and challenging them at their level. And I think there's this myth, there are a lot of myths, right? One is, well, we already know who all the smart kids are, right? We already know who they are. A good teacher knows who they are. Well, sometimes good teachers know who they are, and sometimes good teachers know who certain kids are, the ones with louder parents, or the ones with more privileged and advantaged parents, or the ones who demonstrate a particular kind of aptitude. But I don't think we necessarily know it with equity. I think we know we don't know it with equity. We don't know, because we see on your achievement chart, we see gaps in advanced learners. We see racial gaps, we see all kinds of gaps. So I think the idea that we know who the kids are, I hope, has been successfully busted by this process, or at least it's starting to be. And, you know, we do need these assessments to figure out who the kids are. And assessment doesn't mean test, as you said, but it does have to be some evidence of learning. It could be portfolio work. It could be, you know, describing your work, describing your learning, making your learning visible. There are all kinds of ways to assess, but some evidence that the learning has advanced, which I think is just different from the perception data, right? So the parent perception that the kid has learned is different, or even the kid's perception of having fun, that's all great, but that's different from like, can the child actually do stuff that they couldn't do before? And so I do think that there's just a little bit of this myth of who they are. I think there's another myth, which is, you know, the problem is outside the classroom, right? The problem is, and, you know, certain places you hear this more than others, the problem is because kids get outside enrichment. That's the real problem. They get outside Russian math or whatever. And, you know, one of the things that I think has been, a myth that's been busted here is that, you know, that's not, that's not true. And even if it is, we still have to challenge kids where they are. Because frankly, again, not every child gets Russian math, or not every child gets access to other types of enrichment. And even if they did, right, you don't say that about reading. Well, they read at home too much, so we don't know how to challenge them now, right? Like, tell them to stop reading at home and that would solve the problem. So I just, I feel like there were just a lot of mindsets and assumptions that I think were, it takes a while to extract, and I guess I just appreciate this committee's attempt to begin that. And I wouldn't underestimate the challenge of now bringing that out into an entire group of parents, an entire group of staff potentially. I mean, similar, you know, the idea that the kids will be fine, right? Even if we don't do this, they're not suffering. There are kids who are really suffering and these kids aren't suffering, they'll be fine. And I think that there's just this whole idea of, you know, and Carol Dweck's mindset research talks about this, right? Where we say, well, if you're not challenged, then you get really, really afraid of challenge. And you get brittle, and you freak out, and you run away from challenge, and you're not resilient, and you don't develop skills where you persist. And so I think this idea that the kids will be fine isn't actually right. They get afraid to fail. And so it's a different kind of, a different kind of problem, but if you don't really challenge them early and you don't know who the kids are who need different things, then it, you know, you're just perpetuating further, further problems, especially with equity. And I think parents have a lot of myths of their own, right? The idea of, well, don't, like, don't give me more homework. Don't just give me more worksheets. Don't just give me, like, the kids are under enough pressure as it is, don't give us more. And I think that all of your, you know, your conception of flow, the conception of how, what challenge means, what it looks like, it means engagement, it doesn't mean more worksheets, that parents have to be kind of reeducated as well. Because a lot of parents that I talk to say, well, I just want the kid to be at the next level. I want, you know, my kid's already tested out. Or, you know, in reading, my kids are, it's the Harry Potter, reading Harry Potter in second grade problem. You know, my kid's already so much more advanced. Like, yeah, but your kid doesn't understand Harry Potter, right? Just because they're reading them and when they're eight. And so I do think that there's just something about balancing this idea of, you know, needing assessments, needing tangible proof that achievement has happened and not just perception has happened, but also just matching that to this change in ownership and teachers owning this and parents owning this and all of us owning the fact that there are going to be kids with lots of promise whose parents aren't engaged, and we need to, as a public school system, figure that out. So I think there's just, and why it's so important to do this, because otherwise they do get brittle and they're not resilient and they don't meet their potential and they, it's a different, it's a different way of suffering. So I think there's just a lot of, a lot of work ahead, which is exciting and great, and all this brings us there. But I have to say that when I look at, when I look at the budget that we're putting against this, as I've said in multiple previous meetings, I think that the amount of money that we're putting against this relative to the amount of work we have to do is very small. I think even an override budget, I would anticipate that this will maybe hold us for a year, but if we're serious about all this, if we're serious about engaging parents differently, engaging staff differently, really getting assessments different, really doing all this work, it's going to take a lot more than 1.9 FTEs and $136,000. And so I guess all I would say is, like, we just need to be ready for that if we're serious. So, I mean, in a no override budget, not only is all this going away, but in fact, the other piece that's going away that's of deep concern, it, I don't know if we talked about it tonight, but it's a deep concern, is on a no override budget, none of this is happening and we're not doing $266,000 of math specialists. So it's like a double whammy if the no override situation happens. And here, at least, we are supplementing it with other resources, but I just, I feel like this is amazing and I'm so excited and I feel like it's, we are going to look back on this and say, that was a great start and it was so important to get us here, but I just think the resource level going forward, if we're serious, is going to be much more. And not a wish list resource level. I mean, the wish list resource level is probably 10x, but even just sort of a minimum threshold level is probably significant more than this. So I know I'm repeating what I've said in earlier meetings, but I just feel like if we're going to have this discussion here in a budget context, it's important to underscore. So, but thank you. Thank all of you.
I just want to be sure that as we do thank folks, we thank the committee, that Amy Martin is thanked. Again, this is one of these pieces of work that Amy just so silently, you know, manages and works through that we get to the end here. A tremendous product with your leadership, Amy. So thank you.
Great.
Nice job. Thank you.
So our next agenda item is a technology plan. Oh, by the way, and we're all delighted that ECS isn't just, let's just throw technology at them, so thank you for that also. Hooray. Not that it ever was, not that it ever was in this district. Never in a million years in this district, but it is elsewhere, so thank you for not making it into that here. So technology plan. Do you want to say anything or Jennifer?
No, other than, I think Jennifer, Dr. Fisher Miller did a terrific job the other night of really pulling together with a lot of able assistance from Mr. Stokes, from Mr. Moore and others. You know, the essence of this technology plan and what we've tried to put forward over the last year and a half with the override study group and others. And some of you didn't get a chance to see that presentation, and we wanted to make sure you did, so Dr. Fisher knows I'd stand in the podium for a little while longer with a bottle of water.
Yeah, yeah. Cup of coffee. All righty. Well, thank you very much. So what I would like to do for you tonight is to bring some meaning to our technology plan and help folks understand why are we doing it? What is it exactly that we are doing? And what do we hope to see from it, such that it is clear that we're not just doing things to make them better, but to actually make a difference and make a difference in the student's experience and student learning. We are very driven by our mission, and the language in our mission is about helping students to pursue a productive and fulfilling life. What's critically important about this is to understand that we have to do that work, okay? That idea of developing students here, both in their real time right now, in their world right now, and also with an understanding of what it is that will come before them in their future, which is extraordinarily hard in this day and age. Technology is absolutely an inescapable reality to this work here in terms of working with students now and helping them to prepare for their futures. But it's also, I believe, an immeasurable opportunity. So why this technology, as I said, so we're responsible as educators, as leaders of this school system, to help prepare students for their futures, college, career and citizenship. This is not new for Brookline. All right? We have always sought to prepare students for college, career and citizenship. The part that's new is around preparing them now for their futures. All right? Not our pasts, but their futures. And that's quite different. The literature is replete of all the ways that schools need to change and all the adjustments that need to be made to actually have students become prepared and be ready for what is coming in the future. And you hear this reference so often to 21st century skills. Let me say right now that it's a phrase that I don't like at all. They're not new skills, all right? What they are are hot priority skills, okay? It's more important than ever, more important than ever, that students are able to actually to actually think critically about the mass of material that is before them, to communicate well, to collaborate, and to be creative. And what I just outlined there are the four Cs. Call them the super skills, call them 21st century skills, high priority skills, whatever it may be. But what is very important now, in addition to the three Rs, right, reading, writing, arithmetic, it's about communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. And technology plays an essential role in those. So for generations, for generations, Brookline has enjoyed a reputation of excellent schools. And that definition of excellence cuts across multiple measures. And this is just one example of a single measure. Here is the picture of one of the department's report cards, if you will, of a school. And let me zoom in on this upper right-hand corner. These factors just aren't working. The school percentile. So Brookline schools continue, continue to rank in the highest percentiles in the state of like schools, 98, 96, 91. For generations, that has been true in Brookline. We know the times are changing, and they're changing very, very fast. The town of Brookline is changing, school enrollment is changing, not only in our numbers, but in the students that are coming to us. You've heard Dr. Lupini talk about our ELL population. We've seen studies about the, the differences in socioeconomic status of students coming to Brookline. It's been described as sort of the barbell, more students of low income, more students of upper income. As those changes are happening, we are in now what's called the information age. I'll talk more about that in a minute. So with this change, this, how, how technology has changed our world, the goal of public education has also changed. I'll speak to that again, also. And the public schools of Brookline, our goals have changed. We have created Strategic Plan 2.0. So we're in a position where we have to change, okay? The, the federal government has changed goals for public education, and we want to change. And again, technology plays a critical role. For generations, we've seen evidence of this high achievement, and what I'm showing you here is high achievement, and we are stuck, all right? We have plateaued. Again, I'm using MCAS as an example, but I could put up other measures that would be similar. We have improved over time, and now we have plateaued. So with community input, with the school committee, with staff, we've created the next version of our strategic plan, Strategic Plan 2.0. These goals are very forward-thinking. These goals are about students in the world today, and in what we believe might be the case for their future. There's an example of technology being used or cutting through each and every one of these goals. So if we're talking about every student achieving, what we can do with technology is what was pointed to in the earlier presentation. Technology can help us challenge all students, it can increase that rigor and relevance. It can help students to actually learn the skills that are necessary in this, in this new world, about how to use the internet properly and responsibly, to become responsible digital citizens. And technology plays a critical role as we look, as educators, to grow professionally. You hear again and again, I'm talking about the student learning data, all right? Technology plays an important role for us to access that data and to analyze it and get it back quickly. The new world. So the federal government has changed the goal for public education. You are very familiar with NCLB. With the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, it is not, it's no longer about 100% of students proficient in math and ELA. That is no longer the goal, or one of the goals. It's about college and career readiness. College and career readiness in today's world and in the future. So what does that mean? I've pulled out some examples here just from the Massachusetts frameworks, the ELA literacy frameworks. So there's one whole section describing college and career readiness. Students use technology and digital media strategically and capably. If that's a definition of college and career readiness, then that's what, that's the direction for us, that's the work that we have to do. So we have to actually engage kids in the use of that technology to actually learn those skills. The definition talks about understanding perspectives and cultures. Again, technology plays an important role there. And you see here, reference to a 21st century classroom, which is different than a classroom even in the 90s, the 80s. It has changed very, very quickly. I was reminded today that if you think about our world and how quickly we have changed, that the iPhone, all right, the iPhone, we didn't have, it came in 2007, all right? We're in 2015. Think about what that particular device has done and how that has changed. So 21st century classrooms are not the classrooms of the 1990s, the 80s, and so on. The idea of students demonstrating independence, okay? So how do they actually operate on the internet in a responsible fashion, in a way that they can work through this mass of information, and identify what is meaningful, what is, is actually authentic, and how do they then actually use that information to create knowledge? So not only, excuse me, not only is it about the federal government telling us that our goal has changed, college and career readiness, not only is it about our strategic plan goals, 2.0, about those changing, but it's about our need to advance technology in our schools because teachers are making these moves, as they should. So in our survey, we asked teachers about, do they have sufficient access to technology? And what you see here is a dramatic difference across our schools. These percentages range, they're in the 30s, the 40s, the 50, excuse me, 30s, 40s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, all right? That's, that's unacceptable. That, that, that shows us that there is inequity across our system. What I am happy to say, though, is the Runcle School comes out at 92%. The Runcle School is our best provisioned school right now. Through that renovation project, and the leadership of Mr. Moore and Dr. Bouchain, they have technology, and it took us a little bit to get to this point, okay? But their use of technology has increased dramatically in terms of its appropriate use and its effective use. And teachers now are reporting a 92% response rate. Parents are telling us, all right, in terms of their level of satisfaction of technology in the schools. Again, look at that range, okay? So that experience is quite different across our system. The Heath School, 82%, Beepe, 85%. What I can tell you, in both of those environments, the parent-school communication is very strong, is very strong. So I think that's an element of that higher percentage. I can also tell you, at the Heath School, it is one of the strongest PTOs in our system that supports technology in the school. So again, not a surprise there that the Heath School is high. So let me give you some examples here of where we are right now. So, as I said, teachers are actually accessing technology, they are using it to improve their teaching, to support student learning. So this teacher is using a document camera. It's the 21st century, if you would, overhead projector, right? You can put any document on that, on that device there, and it will present out not just the transparency sheet. What's different here is that, while I would go to the chalkboard and pull down the movie screen, right? This teacher went to the window and pulled down her window shades, because she does not have a whiteboard and a mounted projection system. So we're falling short here. We've made advances, but we're falling short. This is evidence of a teacher not waiting, all right? This teacher needs a mounted projector. This teacher went out and bought a mounted projector. And we are sorry to say, they went ahead and installed it, and I'm happy to say that this teacher now has a Brookline-installed mounted projector. I'm sorry?
That's not going to follow the student's head.
Ah, that's right. That was actually not up for long. That was up for a matter of months before we actually replaced it. Yeah, yeah. But we're, we got the message. So this picture that's spinning, all right? You've all seen that, okay? We have, we've made great strides in terms of the strength of our network. We have, we have, we're going to need to continue to grow that, but what I can tell you is that this image right here is known either as a lesson buster, let's see, what else? Beach ball death, or marble of doom, all right? And those are all references to when a teacher plans a lesson for technology, and gets it up and ready to go, and then you get that spinning ball, all right? And the question is, how long do you wait? Right? How long do you wait? If you're the teacher of a second grade class, how long do you wait? A teacher of a seventh grade class, how long do you wait, right? So it's, it's difficult. Again, we've made some really strong steps, but we have further steps to go. We, we are a very collaborative school system. We are a school system that actually does collect data. We do use data. What we're not doing well yet is we're not actually collecting that data, analyzing it, getting it back to the user in a timely and effective fashion. So it's not that we're not using it, it's not that we don't have it, all right? This actually is evidence of an inventory. Yeah. Access. So this is just from the high school. So what's really difficult is to actually make the point and not be embarrassed by it. Okay? This is hard. This is hard.
I almost, like, anybody who says, like, we don't need a technology plan, I felt this to, like, an email, but I'm not, it's just so hard.
Yeah. And it's, it's hard work that our, that our educators are doing. So this is a comment from an educator at the high school. "We've added two computer carts in our rotation last year, along with the humanities lab, are frequently booked all blocks of the day. It's like adding lanes to a highway in a metropolitan area. New lanes are immediately packed with traffic. Demand always exceeds supply." And then down there, the, the last paragraph. "Without the certainty of knowing the devices will be ready and accessible, and that the tech support will be available, teachers are reluctant to plan lessons that require technology." So again, the reason I'm showing you this is I want to acknowledge the steps that we have taken, all right, the improvements that are being made, but we can't, we can't stop, we can't pause. We have to move forward aggressively and really use the momentum that we have, or teachers are going to lose confidence, and they're going to step way back. So what this is about is the next generation, all right? We have a technology goal. We have a very, very basic technology goal about the infrastructure, about instructional capacity, and about the full integration of the technology into teaching and learning. And so when I think about this goal, and I think about the idea of the next generation, I sort of pause, and I think, so where else in our lives are we experiencing this idea of the next generation? If you think about transportation, and how transportation has changed across, whether you're talking about, you know, air transportation, or trains, or, you know, your car, think about your car and the inside of your car. What does it look like now versus what did it look like 10, 15 years ago? Okay? So your car now is using technology greatly, and it's not only for comfort and use, easy use, it's for safety. So there are multiple reasons that technology is having a dramatic impact on transportation. For an example, banking. How do you bank now versus how did you use to bank? All right? It is the next generation. So technology in our schools, it's about the next generation of our schools, and about how we are moving into the teaching and learning of our times and the future. So the next-generation classroom, all right? What we're talking about are the very basic tools of today. We're talking about the internet, we're talking about devices to access the internet, and then we're talking about the system that's necessary to actually project, show, share with the class there, the mounted projection system. So what you have here, this is today's version, you know, of access to the library, and the film projector, and the movie screen, all right? But these are the contemporary tools, as well as the digital resources. So collectively, across these four items here, this describes the tools that are necessary for teaching and learning today. Now, these are not tools for the sake of tools, all right? These are tools that teachers access when they are designing learning for students that help them meet the learning objectives within the curriculum. So a quick look at this graphic. These pointers are not working. What you have here is that those, well, it's, it's strange, because it works there, but it doesn't work there.
Can I use my laptop?
It works against, yeah, no kidding. So what you have here is the red sides, okay? Curriculum, it's about skills, and then it's about assessment, all right? That's about what the student, the students are learning. And then you've got instruction on the right, all right, and then you have resources. The idea here is, what are the resources that teachers need to bring to bear to engage students in that form of instruction to meet those teaching and learning goals? Technology is that, that one side, that resources. That I'm talking right now about the tools. Please understand that technology itself can also be part of content and skills, all right? In terms of, like, coding or computer science, but what I'm talking about specifically now is around technology as a tool for learning. So how do we integrate technology to enhance teaching and learning? All right? It's about these basic tools. So this is Google Earth, and what happens here is that Google Earth can be manipulated. So that can be projected onto a screen, and students can actually come up and move, right, Google Earth around, and then play tectonics, that whole shifting, that actually happens right there with them, right before them. It's interactive. As opposed to, when I was a teacher, you hit play, and the movie goes forward to show that, that change over time. Much more passive, this is much more active. And what we know is that engaging students is critically important to their learning. This is an example of how we're using technology that supports students from the Learning Center. I can just give you a minute there to, to read this example. So this teacher is making reference to Google Drive, to Canvas, which is the learning management system at the high school. And the idea that what this student is doing is using these tools to support his organization of the classes and also the content material. So this is the example, an example of a, a class Skyping with a student and a class on the other side of the world, all right? We have a classroom teacher who is using Twitter, and she uses Twitter to have her students engage with students in, in Hong Kong, in Israel, in China, around the world. And what those students are doing, it's, it's a bit of, you know, the contemporary version of Pen Pals, but what's different is these students are talking about the content. They're talking about geography, they're talking about items in our social studies curriculum. And they're doing it with kids around the world, increasing global awareness, right? Excuse me?
What languages is that?
I would assume English.
I remember Tom, what grade is this?
This is first grade, thank you. Yeah, yeah, the, the teacher using Twitter. Thank you. So this is a bank of the resources that are available, online resources in all of our libraries. So when a student has access to the internet with a device, they have access to all of this, whereas, back in my day, it was about having an encyclopedia at home, if you were lucky. All right? What this is about is if we get the tools in students' hands and teachers' hands, it's about everyone having access to this rich information. This is an example of how technology is being used to actually engage in authentic science. Students in fifth grade across our system are participating as citizen scientists with Cornell University's Bird Sleuth Project. And what they do is they collect data, and they load it then into this massive database that other students across the country are doing. So here they are in Brookline, putting that in, as well as in Austin, Texas, or Chicago, wherever it is. But they are engaging in real science. But they are engaging in real science. This is an example of using Google Docs to have a conversation basically, to give feedback to a student on his writing. And I've heard lots of interesting ways that people are using Google Docs here. So this is teacher to student, but it's also being used for student to student, multiple students engaging on a single piece of text. And understand that if you're talking about students getting feedback on their work, the teacher has control over what students see and who students can, you know, who they can visit, whose work they can visit. So it's not this wide open, everybody is publicly writing to each other and for each other. I was at a grade six, seven, eight English meeting this afternoon and observing our coordinator, and they were having a discussion about writing, and the teacher commented on her ability to use Google Docs to give students feedback. And she used the phrase, "It's a life changer." And I asked her afterwards, I said, "What did you mean by that? Like, that's really strong. What did you mean?" And what she told me, she said, "I was talking about one student specifically." And what she's able to do with this student is invisible to everyone else, the feedback that she's giving this student and the amount of time that she is spending with this student that otherwise she couldn't with that child and she wouldn't in a large class of 20-something be with that one student. And so she said she is seeing just a remarkable shift in this young man. She's describing that as a life changer. Life changer, possibly, okay? What we are doing now is we are making these devices accessible to everyone, to everyone. So here's an example of, you know, the librarian helping a student to sign out a Mac. Again, student learning data. Google Forms allows me to quickly assess students' knowledge on a topic prior to teaching or after teaching a lesson and have the results sent to a spreadsheet where I can quickly eyeball students who need more help on a concept versus the old method of leafing through stacks of paper.
Can I go back to another slide for a second?
Which? This one? Yes, please.
Just making a comment. We talked earlier about what we hear in the community. So I heard in the community this week, students from Steps to Success, other students came in front of the school committee X number of years ago, said one of the challenges is access, and nothing's been done about it. I read that. And that's not true. You actually approved a budget last year for us to buy devices. We put them in libraries so that they would be accessible and students are borrowing. And if it's anything like when Mr. Moore reported to me on this issue last year, those devices are flying out of libraries for students who don't have access to be able to have that access. So in fact, the school committee and the administration did do something about it. We want to do more, we think we need to do more down the road, but we did take some initial steps to address some of those issues. Thank you.
Yes. And so they're available for sign out, but also through a grant. In addition to that, students in Steps to Success who were identified as in greatest need now have Chromebooks, all right? Chromebooks that they are responsible for. Thank you for going back, Dr. Wapini. So this is just an example of, again, the idea of a quick visual to allow teachers to monitor student learning. This is a Heath teacher. It is an example of homeschool communication. And when Mr. Moore first showed us this in senior staff, what he did is he played the video that this teacher, first grade teacher, made and sent to all the families of those incoming first graders so that they could watch this video about first grade at Heath before they went to school the first day. Yeah. Yeah. So I visited this recently and I'm not going to pull it up, it's a Weebly here, but it is, if you can read the top there, there's a blog, so it's students blogging as well as the teacher. But there's specific parent information, mystery readers, student links, photos and videos. Parents could go onto this site here and they can feel as if they are right in the classroom for days and days. There's so much information and they can see their children right there. And so it really, I think, is an example of what may have the Heath School parents respond, that they are, 82% of them believe the technology is being used well. So this is here, the data that we have on our first phase, the rollout from this year in terms of what we were able to bring to our inventory. I'll show, you'll see here FY14, this ratio, what this is about is the number of students to instructional computer. Okay? So that means the computers that are either available in a lab or that are available on a cart that go into the classroom. So what you see here is a high at the peer school of eight and a low at the Heath School of 2.9. All right? This is, again, representation of a vast inequity in our system. With this first infusion, increasing that inventory, what we were able to do is move that range, that 5.18 range, down to a 1.38. 1.38 range. What we want to do, and you'll see in a chart later, is that ratio right now is about at an average, I believe, of 4.3, and for our next couple of years, we want to bring it to a 2.5. Again, a very strong first step and there's more work to do. How are we going to do this? I have, I've made the comment that I believe that there has been some confusion with our tech plan because it's so simple. Okay? Seriously. That what we have to do, we have to continue to acquire the tools, we have to continue to engage in the robust professional development that's essential that we are doing, we have to evaluate our current structures, town, school, and we have to secure the new staff that are essential to make this work, help this work move forward. In terms of those tools, okay? What I'm talking about here are the very basics of a foundation, the infrastructure, the devices, the mounted projection system, those digital resources, I showed you that bank of resources there. What we are learning from directors, coordinators, department heads is they need different ones, they need some more in order to support the learning of all students. And we have to be sure that we continue the subscriptions that we have. And we need data and operations tools. Very quickly, if I may, you've heard me talk a whole bunch about the student data. There are operations tools in our budget right now. For example, Registration Gateway. Okay? It's a tool to help our new Office of Student Affairs actually register students. Here is the chart of the planned inventory. All right? This is the idea about equity of devices. This is the idea about lowering that ratio. So what you see here is across the top, there's our increase in student enrollment over time. And then you have the existing inventory with those new inventory adds of 600 computers, 600 devices every year. And what that is, is that's a new three-year lease started with those 600 devices every year to then increase those totals such that by FY18, we would be looking at an inventory of 4,800 computers for student instructional use. What that does, if you look then down at the bottom, is it moves our ratio from what was a 7.0 down to what will be a 2.4. As well, this is about life cycle. All right? We have had our devices not be replaced for seven-plus years. Okay? Seven years in technology time, right? You think about what is different now. And that's been a huge strain on the staff to try to keep those devices up and running. What we want to do is we want to move to a four-year cycle and we have funds in the budget to support that.
I was just going to say, the example you gave earlier, that seven years would be about equal to owning the first iPhone. Right? Okay.
So there have been questions about what's your professional development plan? Well, we have a professional development strategy. And it's a different word because there's great complexity to what's necessary to meet the needs of all of our educators with all of the learning that's required for the type of shift that we're talking about. So there's learning about the actual tool and how do you turn it on and how do you use it properly. Then there's learning about how do you actually redesign your lessons to maximize the potential of technology. And then there's a learning across the spectrum of different adult learners that we have. So there is no simple list of, here are the workshops that we are offering. Not only don't we have that, it's that it's not the most effective. Okay? Research shows that adult learning has the greatest impact on students over time when it's ongoing, when it's job embedded, when it's simply the part, it's just part of your job, it's the work you do. And in Brookline, that's about coaching. I'll come back to that there. We essentially have these three prongs, if you will, to our strategy. As I just said, the idea of our coaches. Instructional coaching is a very important part of our professional learning in Brookline. We're talking here about educational technology specialists, but you heard me earlier talking about our ECS resource teachers. We also have our librarians who serve as coaches for teachers. The idea being that these are people with a certain area of expertise that they then support other educators to learn about that area. We have professional learning groups, professional learning communities across our system, and there's research that supports those characteristics of a professional learning community and how people learn in collaboration with their colleagues. And again, this is evidence of job embedded professional development. We have collaborative time built into our school day. As you know well, the four days of extended time then allows us to release early on Fridays and teachers come together to do that work as well as we have planning common time. All of this job embedded work is effective because it's within a culture of collaboration and a culture of continuous learning. It is simply how our educators do their job. Then I've got this category I'm calling required. And what I mean by that is that these are, they're programs, they're days, time that might be within our contract, they are certain structures that are in place. And when we have professional development that we want every single educator to engage in, then here are our strategies to get at that kind of learning. Recently, in our mentoring induction program, our second and third year teachers all gathered to have a day of choice around some technology. And our ETSs and some teachers came to offer that professional learning for those teachers. We have the 183rd Day. What that's about is a six-hour block of time for professional learning that in the past we used for an app called Teach Point, which related to our evaluation. You know well the idea of release days. And we have release time and just other examples there of how we've used ETSs, ed tech specialists. When we had learning that was required, that we knew that everybody absolutely had to have in order to roll something out, we structure that delivery with our ed tech specialists. And the example here that I'm using is with Google Apps. We've rolled Google Apps in grades six, seven, eight first, and then recently in grades four and five. And we did that in a very planful, structured way. And we have department meetings. And then there are lots of opportunities. And I have to tell you that Brookline educators absolutely take advantage and create these opportunities, and we have wonderful partners that allow for this. I've mentioned the Brookline Education Foundation, but as well the 21st Century Fund. We have accessed grants from the Department of Education with the leadership of Amy Martin. We do offer workshops. Workshops are very effective when you have sort of that technical learning that's necessary. We support conferences. The Building Learning Communities Conference is the Allen November Conference, and we have had upwards of...
For two years, I think we've had over 80...
Over 80 Brookline educators participating over two years in that conference, which is right here in Boston. And again, the emphasis for that conference is about, it's about the teaching and learning. And then how do you actually...
Oh, Building Learning Communities.
Building Learning Communities, yes. Other opportunities, we support educators in online courses, but also reimbursement for courses, face-to-face courses. And Mr. Moore and Ms. Martin have created this thing that are called Tech Talks, where teachers come together and they present the work that they are doing. And that has been well attended and lots of fun. Every single one of these offerings are always aligned to the school and the system goals. And what we do is we have a needs assessment that we administer every year, but also we attend to our evaluations. And what is it that we see through the evaluation process? What is the learning that is needed? So the third element of our strategy for how we're rolling out this tech plan is around the staffing. And the budget right now contains two new positions of the multiple positions that are necessary. The first one is the Digital Learning Specialist. I think the title's still in question, maybe Digital Media Specialist. The idea here is that when we identify an app, an application, that we want to go system-wide, there is a transition process from the acquisition and investigation of that particular app to actually getting it to the user and having the learning that's necessary for the appropriate implementation of that app. So what I mean is that, take Teach Point, for example, that's the app that we are using for evaluation. So we worked with the vendor and we purchased that app. And then Mr. Moore played the role with Corey Stott to load everything that was necessary, all right? All the educators, all the evaluators that needed to be in that app, okay? But then we had to load all the forms, the evaluation forms, all right? And we had to get all the users up and ready. So Scott Moore played that role of getting us all trained, keeping that app up and running. If you had a question, who did you call? You called Scott. That's not the work of our Director of Educational Technology and Libraries, all right? That's the work of a Digital Learning Specialist. And what's difficult is I could give you about five other app examples of that. So we, this is a very important position. And the idea here is that they transfer this learning and then they hand it off. They hand it off to the owner. Teach Point, to that example, it now rests with Dr. Allen and her staff in HR. A data manager. What this is about, student data, student learning data, over and over, you've heard me say that. What we have to do is we have to do a better job at the actual collection, analysis, dissemination, interpretation of our data. And we have a Director of Accountability and Research right now who's serving as our data manager. All right? That's not the work that we need her to do. We need to have a data manager who can do this work to then allow Ms. Stott to be the So that's the why we are doing it, that's what we are doing, that's how we are doing. And then the question is, is it working? What's the impact? This is expensive, all right? So what's the return on the investment? Multiple measures. It's not a single particular point of evidence that I would be showing you. It's over time and it's lots of different ways. The star chart is something that Scott Moore submits every year to the department. It is a review of the technology, where we are now and its use and how it's being applied. We will be able to see over time what that looks like because we are then reporting the actual surveys. There are examples of the surveys and the survey questions that we ask. We'll be able to look at those. And I think I give you some other examples in just a minute. Student learning data. I believe so very strongly that the reasons we are seeking to acquire this technology is to enhance teaching and learning. If we are enhancing teaching and learning, it will then have impact on student learning and we will be able to see that in the measurements of that learning, whether that is the state measurement of college and career readiness, or it's about the assessments that we do internally here in Brookline. Over time, we need to have that as one of our points of impact and success. And then again, to point to the strategic plan, the next generation, Strategic Plan 2.0, it is forward thinking. What we have to do is we have to take those visionary goals and unpack them to get to very specific measurable goals that have these metrics and they have those action plans. And it is those metrics that we will be reporting to you publicly in At School in Brookline over time. over time, and being accountable to this work that I'm sharing with you tonight. So these are just examples of those survey questions that I shared earlier, that when we do this right, we're going to see these results. When we do this right, we're going to have all of our schools in the 90s, not just one. When we do this right, we'll hear from parents that they are satisfied, that they are seeing the effective use of technology. When we do this right, we will improve access for all students. This survey right here was a survey given last year to our Brookline High School students. We asked them about their internet connection and the device that they have or don't have. And for the device, this is actually question number two, but it's the first one listed here. All right? We have 32% of students who do not have a device that they can bring to school to do their schoolwork. All right? Only 68% do. 18% of our students are without a high-speed internet connection at home. 18%. So think for a minute back to the slide that I showed you about those digital resources. All right? If you are a student with a device and a high internet connection, a high-speed internet connection, you can access those resources. That information is available to you. If you don't, you can't. And that is an opportunity that is inequitable in our system right now. So whether we're measuring, whether it's PARC, whether it's MCAS 2.0, whatever it is, I believe that in time, we will be able to show you an increase in our student learning. And again, publicly, publicly, we share with you the metrics of Strategic Plan 2.0. And you'll be able to see for yourself, in fact, how we're doing. So we're at a critical time right now. All right? We need to continue to be able to say that over generations, Brookline schools are high-achieving. We need to be able to say that, yes, times are changing, but so are we. And that they are changing so fast, and we are keeping up. We are shifting. We are making the adjustments that are necessary. We need to acknowledge that no longer is it about this finite body of knowledge that rests with a single teacher in the classroom, that he imparts then to his students, that they then tell back to the teacher. It's about an infinite, infinite array of information that is accessible 24/7, if you have the right resources and the knowledge how to use that properly. With the change in the goal from the Federal Department of Education and our change in our strategic plan, all right? We will be able to show you those metrics and to show you impact over time. And so, it really comes down that we have to provide our teachers the contemporary tools of teaching and learning to meet these new goals, to achieve this excellence as defined for today and for tomorrow. Because Brookline has always been about college, career, citizenship. What's different now is the age and the time and how things have changed. And this is what we need to make that next step. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Clearly, there's a lot of myth-busting here also, what it is we're doing and we're not doing. So thank you for laying it out so clearly with, you know, the link from our goals to our devices, to our staffing, to the professional development, to the definition of success for kids. So it's terrific to see it with really specific examples and how it ties into the big picture. So thank you. Ms. Trebelski?
Well, I wanted to thank you again for doing it a second time. I know you had to do this once before for the advisory committee, but it really was very illuminating. And I sort of want to apologize for my burst out before, but probably, there was a kid in that class who spoke the language of the student and could translate with all our ELL students around, from around the world.
Oh, that's exciting.
I imagine. That's probably what the teacher did. I mean, how else could, you know? So it, I think you're, this is really important. It fits in with what we saw at the 21st Century Fund and how we have to educate our children today. I mean, I'm certainly proud of the older generation and can barely use an iPad and iPhone, but, you know, our kids know how to do that and can do even more. And we should be having them do more. So, thank you.
Great. Other observations or questions? I mean, we've talked about this a number of times. I feel like that's the challenge with our meetings. We have these discussions in subcommittee meetings, then we get here and we say, "Yep, we've already kind of talked about this," which is great. Go ahead.
And not to keep us all here. So one of the things I was wondering, as you were taking us through this, is, is there a district in Massachusetts or anywhere else that we hold ourselves up to? Who's gotten this right? And what are, and is all of this beautiful planning and objectives and goals, is it based on what they're doing right? Or are we making this up in our usual Brookline ways? Like, we love what they're doing, but in Brookline, we should really, you know, sort of structure it this way? Is there, who's gotten it right?
So, I don't believe there is a single school system that's gotten it right. What I believe, and through our research, is that there are elements of right, if you will, across our state, but then our country, in terms of, what does this actually look like in a school and in Brookline? And so, it's a little bit of the latter, I'm sorry to say. Okay? What I mean by that is that I am very proud that the way we are seeking to use technology is fundamentally about designing learning. Fundamentally. All right? And that there are examples of great uses of iPads or Chromebooks, you know, folks that have a gig of internet access and, you know, how they're able to move through that. There are lots of those examples. And I think Mr. Moore could probably give you the names of the schools, for sure. But what I appreciate is seeing where there is great success, great impact, and then translating, not transferring, translating that back to Brookline. But we actually have quite a list of models. There are absolutely exemplars.
Other questions? Ms. Scotta?
I was going to say, I'm not sure in the, I'm not sure as many in the Commonwealth. Although there are some, I think you're right about, oh, I think you're right about some pieces.
Right. And I would just say that I think it's important to distinguish between getting it right in terms of the full-on instructional learning, to your point, and designing, and what our plan is, which is plumbing, or as you often talk about it. And there are districts in this state who are light-years past us.
Yes.
And some of those districts are poorer than we are.
Yes.
And so, when I went to the Massachusetts Association for the School Committee Conference, I was so embarrassed to not be able to, because the assumption was, we had all of this. And actually, the district that I spoke to that had all of the plumbing right anyway was Worcester. I was like, Worcester? Okay. And it was, you know, and it was because, to your point about enrichment challenge and support, and how much it costs to do this, they, you know, they just went whole hog on the purchase and the setup. But now, I can't tell you what the outcomes have been in terms of student learning, but in terms of just getting it done and set up, it seemed like they had actually taken that leap to get the equipment set up and people trained and all of that stuff.
And there are, I mean, I've said it over and over again, right? But in terms of particular schools within a district, I think Beverly High School has it right. And in the one-to-one initiative, they started six or seven years now, Mr. Moore, ago? Something like that? Yeah. Yeah. And there are some districts, I mean, the district Mark Edwards is in, people look to. There are some districts around the country that...
I guess, when I, when I hear about that, and, I mean, in Worcester, so I wonder, I go right to the thing that always resonates for me, just because I had a parent who started the Community Technology Access Movement. So the part that always resonates for me is the detail on how many of our students go home. And as soon as they are home, they are cut off from all of this work. They're cut off from their teachers, from their friends, from their, from the work that is available to them, to the, you know, it's not just the information that's available, it's the work. And I wonder, in a place like Worcester, that clearly has put it in place in the schools, but if it in fact is generating a different way of working for every student and every teacher, what do you do about the kids who go home and are suddenly cut off from that? I mean, that's an extraordinary challenge, and why I'm really, really proud that it is, has such a central role in what we're talking about. Because the idea of expanding inequities as we move forward to try to close inequities is a core frustration of this work, and a piece of what is so expensive and what most districts, including maybe this one, right, don't have the appetite for in terms of really solving.
There are some of those districts who, out of necessity, right, have, in cooperation with the city, with city government, have gotten it right. So they've figured out ways to make sure it's written in the cable contracts, they've figured out ways to divert bandwidth at particular times of the day when they're not using it. They figured some of those things out, because they had to. And others who look very much like those, like a Worcester, haven't.
And we're going to need to figure that out.
We're clearly going to need to.
And that's why one of the things that was frustrating to me when we were talking about technology on the town side was that, one of the conversations I've had with many of the selectmen is to say, you know, it's not like the town side has this figured out. There are things that the town needs to be investing in that will be absolutely essential to the success of this happening. And those sorts of cooperative agreements are exactly the same.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think part of, part of our obligation, I mean, I know we do have this cooperation on the town side, and that's a wonderful thing, but part of our obligation as a committee, as we work with the town, is to emphasize things like that, because we cannot do this on our own. This has got to be a town-wide effort.
Right. Absolutely.
In order for it to work for all the kids.
Ms. Scotta?
I'm wondering, and this is more about innovation and professional development, but you showed us some examples of things the teachers were doing in their classroom. As the staff gets younger, you are really working with people who are very, very familiar with technology. And I imagine that there are some marvelous things, some interesting things, going on in classrooms that maybe nobody knows about. And I'm wondering how you are accessing what is actually happening in the system, not only accessing it, but looking at it, evaluating it, and then sharing it out. Because partly, I know from going to VEF meetings, where they have brought people in there to show things that they're doing, that there's really interesting stuff. And things that aren't terribly difficult to do if you happen to know about them. And I think that we've got, so what I'm saying is, there are a lot of things down at the ground level that we could be bringing up, so that more teachers would know about them.
So what I find very difficult is I do know of a lot of those things, and we can't bring them up until people have the resources in their school and they're easily accessible.
Just to add, I remember, and I think it was last year, it was, it was, I think, November, it might have even been 2013, when the VEF was going through some, there was a grant proposal. It's the ones where you just have to, it's not the longer ones.
The idea, idea a lot?
And I remember the comment being made, that so many of the requests were for technology, for iPads, for whatever.
I don't know why I'm on a myth-busting thing tonight, but I do feel like this is, again, the same, and I've never actually seen the show, but I do feel like this is another place where the rhetoric of the conversation out in the community is so vastly different from like, what we're actually doing and proposing, that it's just a little striking. So, I mean, there were conversations, I remember, about, you know, is this technology replacing teaching? It's like, well, no. It's the opposite of that, right? It's technology-enabling teaching. And so, you know, I think you've just done such a good job of explaining that and giving specifics, or, you know, this is some sort of wish list. It's like, well, actually, this isn't close to a wish list. We are behind, this is basic, you know, devices, basic staff, basic professional development, teacher training that we need. Or, you know, people saying, well, how could, you know, why don't you start this program in the middle grades? That was my favorite one. Why don't you start this technology thing small, in the middle grades, and then we can kind of see how it goes, and then roll it out? Which is like such a...
This technology thing.
This technology thing. And literally, that is like, well, you've got like a fundamental misunderstanding of what we're doing here, right? This is not about a curriculum. We're not teaching a particular curriculum. This isn't, you know, like a particular culture or a particular, right? This is, what we're doing is where it's embedded in everything. And I think there's just so much out there about, let's go back to 2006 and re-baseline from 2006, which, you know, the iPhones didn't exist, and, you know, let's, it's kind of fine. My school's fine. That was my favorite one. We're doing fine in our school. It's like, well, look at the inequity numbers. We're not doing fine as a district. This is, we are behind. And so, what I love about this is just in one place, it sort of summarizes all of the different pieces, from the high-level goals all the way through to just some of this basic myth-busting. So I appreciate that.
If people want copies of this, this is actually now up on our website. It's up from the advisory committee there, and it's actually the entirety of that population, which includes a couple other pieces of a presentation. But this presentation and all the handouts that you have in front of you are actually also up on the website as well.
Which is great. And I think that one of the things that came out of that advisory conversation is people said, "You know what? I actually understand how this is better and not just different." Right? You're not just putting an electronic textbook in someone's hand. You're showing me how you can move plate tectonics around, and that's a different way to experience education. You're showing me how you can, you know, look at online editing, and you experience editing in a different way when you're doing a group editing process. And, you know, just all those types of, the data gathering, the birds, data gathering fifth grade across the country, and sharing that data with other students. It's just a different way to experience education. And I think that it's just, it's very exciting. So, thank you.
Ms. Chau, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe a new record at that podium, I think.
It's a good thing you have water bottles, which may or may not be banned by the town sometime soon. Okay. Yeah. Report out on the school committee workshop is not going to take 10 minutes, because most of it was an executive session. We were in executive session for real estate negotiations, for negotiations with, strategy for non-aligned personnel, for potential litigation, and for collective bargaining. So that was most of what we did. And the two things that we did outside of executive session were the, we revoted the school, the SOI, the Statement of Interest, for the high school. Just so everyone's clear, that our priority is Brookline High School. And that's what we're submitting as soon as I sign this piece of paper. Probably tomorrow, is my guess. And then, I think, and the last thing that we did in open session, we canceled, which was we were going to look at the curricular impacts of the budget, which we've just basically done here. So, that was our report on the workshop. All right? And we had better sandwiches and stayed within budget, which was also very exciting.
Thank you, Robyn. Very much.
Sandwiches within budget.
Better sandwiches in budget. Not only did we give up on cookies, we gave up on other things. Chips, I think, got lost. So, all right, that's it. Anything else? No new business? Okay. We're adjourned.
Thank you.